Stand for the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, fire evacuation in case of a fire. There's two ways to exit the building. The door is directly behind you or to your my left, your right. Go down stairs and away from the building. Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronilla is here. Frank Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Hulinski.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D. Antonio.
Here.
Walter Crizell.
Here.
And Rob Anderson.
Here.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for April 10.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, concerns, comments? Seeing none?
Abstaining.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with one abstention. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for April 16 special meeting.
Second.
Any comments, questions, concerns?
I'll be abstaining on that.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And with three abstentions. Okay, we, I will entertain a motion to move item 12B after public participation.
So moved, Madam Chairman. Second.
Okay, all right. We don't have a town attorney support report. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? I'm sorry, thank you. See, I was just trying to.
It's all right.
Okay. No town attorney report, no zoning enforcement officer report at this time. Anyone in the public would like to come up and comment? Anything that is not on the agenda? Anyone? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public participation. Okay, new business, SPR 1952, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, SPR number 1952, 145 and 153 South Road. Modifications to approved site plan under PH number 3090. Enfield Properties LLC applicant, Enfield Properties LLC, plus Mike T. Pinella owners and Maplewood Village of Enfield LLC owners, map 55, lots 59, dash 80, R44, and I-1 zones.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'll be very brief.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, I will. I was going to say, I'll be very brief. Attorney Paul Smith, 27 South Main Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut, representing the applicant, Enfield Properties LLC. So this 145, 153 South Road was approved back in May of 2024 for 168 multifamily units on this property on South Road. I think we sent you a thing, if you can put it up. Abe, I think, Ziyad may have sent you the map. Basically, very quickly, we're splitting the property into, into two lots. A parcel A, which is 6.5 acres of. Sure. 6.5 acres of industrial land and 14.16, 17.62 acres of residential where the multifamily sits. It, it used to be 14.16 acres of industrial. So what we're doing is we're splitting off lot A, as you can see on the map, which is a piece of strictly industrial property. And, and the theory behind that is at some point, because it's industrial, it will be developed for industrial purposes. And it made sense to split it off from the multifamily units. The parcel A, which is where the multifamily units are, as well, as you can see from the sheet, is well within the criteria for that zone. In fact, we've actually increased the conservation area from 7.52 acres to 8.39 acres. So we've reduced the overall size of the parcel on which the residential sits, but we've actually increased the conservation area. And there was always an intent to develop the industrial parcel. It was never done with the idea that that wouldn't be developed. And it just seemed to make more sense to develop it independently, if you will, of, of the multifamily. It doesn't, taking this parcel A out doesn't affect access. It doesn't affect setbacks or anything like that for the multifamily. And like I said, we increased our conservation area. The town has administratively, staff has administratively approved it as a lot split. And they've issued, I think, a zoning certificate for that purpose. So we just come before you for a modification of the site plan. We have no issues with the report that staff did or, you know, the conditions of approval, which pretty much mirror, I think, actually what was, what was approved in 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this. But again, I, you know, we regard it pretty much as a pro forma application. Doesn't diminish or, or impact the residential development. We, we got approved. Like I said, arguably, increasing the conservation area is probably a good thing, so. Happy to answer any questions the commissioner, staff may have.
Staff?
I concur with Attorney Smith, and there really isn't much to discuss. Basically, the lot lines just have been modified and there's now more conservation area. It's a legal modification and this is just, as, as he said, this is just to make sure that the, the final plans reflect the new configuration of the lots.
Okay, thank you. Rob, you have any questions? Christian? John?
No.
I do have one question, and it's probably for the staff, about the health comments. Are they going to be covered somewhere?
Let me just remind myself. Hold on. They'll be covered. Yes, yeah, that's going to be covered during construction.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure, because there's quite a bit there.
Yes, that'll all be with building permit.
Walter? Elsa? Vinnie? Joe?
Nope.
I don't hear you. Okay. I will entertain a motion then to approve SPR.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan modification of public hearing number 3090 for SPR number 1952 for a lot line reconfiguration and new property boundaries for the development. And note that all conditions from public hearing number 3090 shall remain in effect as approved and recorded on June 14, 2024, in book 2907, pages four, five, and six.
Second.
All right, roll call, please. Oh, any comments, discussion on this? Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Kenneth Hulinski.
Four.
Vincent Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronilla is four.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Thank you all, members of the commission. Thank you for just moving me up because it was pro forma. I appreciate that. I appreciate staff's comments and cooperation.
Thank you. Okay. When you're ready, Mr. Secretary.
What's the next one? What are we doing next here?
XZA 25-02.
Okay. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at their special meeting of Wednesday, March 26, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. XZA number 25-02, application for text amendment to change section 5.60 special requirements for special development district on Enfield applicant SDD zone.
Okay, is the applicant here or?
I'm here.
Okay, all right. Yes.
Hello again. Okay, so currently we have in our regulations, special development district section that allows for adaptive reuse of vacant and blighted properties that have structures. In lieu of creating brand-new regulations, you know, updating our zoning regulations, our consultant, Don Poland, agreed to come up with some more flexible guidance and regulations that will basically allow adaptive reuse of, of places even without structures. So dilapidated and vacant properties that need to be, you know, perhaps they've already been built on and now they're vacated. So he did come up with these regulations. Staff reviewed them and we commented and we kind of went back forth a couple times. And so now we have this SDD regulation as it's proposed. I'll just kind of go quickly through it. Basically, this is a rezone application. And what that does is it requires a master plan that becomes its own zoning district. So Big Low Commons was a SDD, but of course, that was a big industrial warehouse, but so, so it was a structure or so. But this is different with the vacant land or adapt, dilapidated land, sorry about that. So essentially, what happens is an applicant will come in, they'll have a pre-application meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, present their concept plan, which is a master plan, concept plan, kind of the same terminology. They will propose what they're, they will give what they're proposing to the commission informally, and you can discuss it on the record, but it, it is a, it is not an actual application. It's just so they could get feedback as to how the application should be. So once they make the application after your pre-application meeting, they, they prepare and present a conceptual plan. And according with the zone change procedures and site plan approvals, it would meet the requirements of the, of the regulations. The zone change master plan basically sets the bulk and area, the, the uses, the setbacks, the density, anything that the zoning regular, regulations would have, it would be setting that for that property. So after the SDD, the site plan and master plan are approved, minor changes could be made. And that is one of the things that might be changing in future conversation this evening. But basically, right now, if, once it's established that you could have site plans approved with it, or you could have site plans approved after the fact. So the point of that is that engineering plans and site plans are very expensive. So the applicant is looking to have some sort of faith that it's going to, that, that they will be able to do this plan without having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars or however much money it is to do the site plans, the full engineering, topography, grading, site utilities, landscaping, all of that. So, so it's, they're going to be basing everything that they do on the master plan with their site plans in the future.
Okay, I have questions. We have a proposed one that we received on March 11th that we kind of quickly went over in a workshop. And then we have the proposed modifications that we received in our packet on Friday, on the 18th. And then I got an email at 1 o'clock this afternoon with more changes.
Correct.
So I have some concerns about the email because there's something in here I need to have corrected for the record on their letter.
Okay, so, so I agree, I concur with your statements. So, so you have our proposed staff regulations. And then WoodSonia, who is the developer of the Enfield Marketplace, as we know it as Enfield Square Mall, they did have a proposed modifications. And then the one that you received today is another set of modifications. So.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on what staff has proposed at this point?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
But I will let the other commissioners go first, and then we'll open it up to the public. Rob?
I have no questions.
Okay, Christian?
I mean, as far as what staff proposed, I, I don't have any questions. I mean, I, I think we'll discuss more about the proposed changes, but I'll, I'll wait off on that, so we just talk about the base level.
John?
Nothing yet, I'm still, I just.
The second, yeah, okay. Ken?
Nothing yet.
Vinnie? Joe? Frank?
Yeah, I don't know. Nothing.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to finish one, I'm sorry, do you want to go on?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay, just want to finish the one comment about paragraph F. So there is going to be times that, and the applicant will not be the developer. And we added this paragraph F for that situation. So that would mean that they would not have to come in with a full-blown master plan. They'd still have to do as much detail as possible, show the roads, show the utilities, show the general shape and area of, of the plots of land or subdivision underneath the, the master plan. And then they would sell off those different parcels to a developer. So then they would come in for the actual site plan. So it'd be very difficult for them to, to express the height of buildings or the facades or the, the actual locations. They could come up with a concept, and I think you've actually seen that concept before. But then the site plan itself would have to come in afterwards and with, with the details. And so we came up with this section just so they didn't have to comply with all the site plan and the, all of the master plan requirements upfront. But then we proposed that the special permit would be required for all the subsequent site plans. So this is, this is in particular, one of the sections that the WoodSonia team would like to discuss with this commission. And when you are ready, there is, there are attorneys in the, in the audience, and we have two members on Zoom.
Well, I do have, with the modification one that we received on the 18th, I have concerns taking out the landscaping and recreational use because that makes it very vague as far as our amenities that are required. And then I also have issue with the nine years that there, that you had, because in nine years, this board will change, staff may change, you're going to lose some, people won't know, who come after us, what we, what we were thinking when we did this. So I have concern about that. Concern about the 30% that is administrative approval and being able to increase a building size 30%. That's another concern that I have. And by increasing buildings by 30%, it also increases density, causing parking concerns and traffic concerns. So I, I, I have concerns about the first one. Why don't we just go with that one for now?
So would you like a presentation from the team or would you?
Sure, sure, I'll listen, yeah, sure.
So.
Please.
Attorney Seaman, is there?
All right. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Evan Seaman. I'm a lawyer at Robinson &amp; Cole in Hartford, and I'm here this evening on behalf of WoodSonia Acquisitions LLC. Joining me by Zoom are two members of the team, Mitch Holan, who is with WoodSonia, as well as Dean Apostolares, who's with Kim Lee Horn, the, the project engineer. And as your planner mentioned, WoodSonia has an interest in the property with the Enfield Square Mall because, as you all know, WoodSonia provided an informal presentation in the past for its vision for the redevelopment, redeveloping this property as Enfield Marketplace. And the reason that this regulation is so important to the WoodSonia team this evening is because this is likely the regulation that we would be filing under for that master plan redevelopment of the mall site. So we were pleased to learn that the town was in the process of amending its regulations and provide some, some proposed suggestions for the commission's consideration this evening. And all of the proposed suggestions really stem from what Ms. Witten pointed out, and that is, WoodSonia, while it's likely to be the developer of some portions of the property, it's also likely not to be the developer of every vertical component of the entire site. Other developers will come in, and there's a process for that, which is laid out in the proposed regulations. So we fully support the spirit and intent of this SDD regulation, which your consultant, Mr. Don Poland, drafted. But we also have some additional suggestions, which we will believe provide greater flexibility for situations like this where the applicant for the master plan isn't going to be the developer of the entire site, especially for a large project site, which could have various parcels that comprise it. So we, the team, our team provided comments to town staff, which I believe you mentioned were in your pack, you received in your packets previously, for some suggested revisions, which we'd be pleased to go through this evening. Earlier today, I also sent in the letter, which is more, it really provides explanation for the proposed revisions. There are a couple changes noted and highlights in the document, but largely what you have before you in terms of proposed revisions is what was provided a few weeks ago. So it's not a big, a big change. There are a couple new words which are, which I've highlighted to indicate which is different from before. But with that in mind, really, the proposed revisions, they're fallen, there are five proposed, proposed revisions, four of which are two existing regulations that Mr. Poland and staff prepared, and one is a provision that we propose creating and putting in this SDD regulation. I, I'm not sure what you have before you in terms of, do you have the proposed?
Yes.
You do, you have the proposed? Okay, great.
But we haven't really had time to read and digest it because we didn't get it until this afternoon, so that.
Yes, fully understand that. So the first proposed revision, and it may be a non-issue based on what town staff just stated, but we, we, you know, because WoodSonia is likely not to be the developer of the entire site, it, it's in a really difficult position to accurately predict every single aspect of the master plan as, you know, someone who was going to develop the entire site could more easily do. And for that reason, we proposed, WoodSonia proposed eliminating certain elements of the master plan requirement, which fall under section, proposed section 5.60.1.1A, Roman numeral four. And you can see the stricken language there. You know, Madam Chair, you mentioned landscaping and recreational areas. In addition to those, we propose eliminating the residential unit mix by number of bedrooms and certain other elements. But Ms. Witten just described now, and also in her staff report, indicates that the less detailed site plan requirement, which is provision F of the town's proposed application, already likely allows this flexibility. And if that's the case, it seems like we can proceed under that provision and wanted to ensure that that's accurate with the commission because that is something that's very important to the WoodSonia team. It is, as I mentioned, difficult to depict every single element of the site plan that Ms. Witten just described. So that's the first proposed revision. The second one is about the timing and, you know, how long is this, and that's section, proposed section 5.60.3. And basically, it, you know, this provision addresses, well, how long is a master plan valid for without a site plan having been submitted to actually develop the site? And in the regulation proposed as part of the application by town staff and its consultant, it set it at 36 months, which is only three years, and we believe is a very short time. So we proposed, especially for a developer who, again, isn't going to develop the entire site and is going to have to market the property and take additional steps to make sure that this, its vision for the property comes to fruition. So for that reason, we, we proposed, I believe, in the packet, the proposed revisions that you received in the packet, 72 months, two extensions up to 72 months. The proposed revision today was slightly more than that. But in discussing with, with staff, I think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think one, one way to potentially address this would be, well, there's the site plan statute. And the, in site plans, we know are valid at least for five years. And then there's the possibility of extensions for up to 10 years altogether. So at a minimum, we believe that the, there should be at least that 10-year period for this master plan to be valid. And in the rezone, too, not only is the master plan invalidated, but the site designation from, to the SDD would also be, become invalidated if a site plan wasn't submitted within, within just three years under the town's proposal, which, again, isn't a lot of time. So we, I've been discussing that with staff, and I think, you know, there can be some further discussion on that, and I'm sure members, Mitch and, and others of the project team can discuss that further. But that's the second proposal that we have for you this evening, proposed revision. The next two relate to proposed sections 5.60.3E, and, and it shows for me as F. It might be different for you. But, but basically, this is the modification procedure for, for master plans. And, and the first section addresses situations where an S, an SDD master plan is sought to be revised after site plan approval. And the other, the second section is a, a master plan modification prior to site plan approval. So again, the 10%, Madam Chair, you, you mentioned the 10 to 30% threshold, and, and that is the, the main change that we have here. We thought that 10% just was a very small, didn't provide enough leeway and flexibility for a situation where there are going to be, have to be some modifications and some changes to the plan because there are going to be other, potentially some other developers that come and, and are part of the Enfield Marketplace. So again, it's not going to be a situation where a new use is going to come in. If it's a new use, a use that's different from your master plan, that has to come back before the commission. If it's a new building, that has to come back before the commission. This 10 to 30% increase applies to existing uses and existing buildings. So that's what, what these two sections are intended to address. And, and the second section, too, I should state, the one regarding amendments to master plans before a site plan application is submitted, that provision isn't in the proposed text amendment language, and we think it should be included because there's nothing in there that addresses that scenario. And we think that's an important situation where it could very well be that the master plan does have to be amended before a site plan is submitted. And, and that's the. And that's the reason that we included that provision, to kind of close the gap with that. And then finally, the last provision, which is the town's proposed Section 5.60.3. F. We propose it as, it appears in our letter as G because we proposed the new provision right before that. And it appears on page four of my letter from this afternoon, under Roman numeral five. Just a small change to the language there. We just wanted to be sure that Woodsonia is going to be able to qualify to present, to submit this less detailed master plan. Again, that's a provision that's already in the town's proposed text amendment language. We're just proposing some modified language to be sure that we can qualify for that. So that's a quick overview of the proposed revisions. And I know that you all have some questions. I am joined, as I mentioned, by Mitch and Dean this evening. And Mitch or Dean, did you have anything to add now? Or did you want to address questions as they come up?
Yeah, it's nice to be before.
An address, please, for our record.
Mitch, Boland, 21160 C Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska, 68022. I think it was before you folks, probably six months, six or eight months ago. So excited to be back. I'm the, one of the principals on the, on the project. I think Evan, Evan gets to answer all the hard questions tonight, is what he agreed to. So I'll take the easier ones. But I did want to address a couple, a couple of points that one of the commissioners brought up as we were just talking about this. And I think, I think what you said lends exactly to why we're asking for some of these modifications. The town's been great to work with. I think we were fortunate that the SDD process was kind of where it was at while we were working on the Enfield Marketplace project. Right now, I mean, we, we do have some challenges with the existing zoning, where it doesn't allow for residential. That's a, that's a key component of this. So we view the SDD as a, as a, you know, viable option to rezone the property under. At the same time, we are early on in the project. And as Evan talked about, we're not going to oversee, it's unlikely that we would oversee the vertical construction of every single component within this development. That's just not how these master plan developments take place. I mean, I could give you examples, Satellite Commons across the street. I mean, with the Costco, right? That came much further down the road. That was developed by Costco. Projects like that, you know, will likely happen within Enfield Marketplace. There'll be end commercial users and restaurants who will want to build their own building for their prototype. Right now, we've really just got placeholders for those. Are we confident in the uses? Yes. Are we confident that a building will be there? Yes. Do we know that their building is going to be exactly 5,000 feet? Of course not, right? We're just not at that stage. So I think what we would like to do is have the general parameters in place so that we are able to move forward once we have eventual users, but not have to come back to a planning and zoning commission to modify this numerous times. I think that would really be challenging to both us and end users for the development. One of the questions that you had mentioned on the, I'll just use a couple of these by example, the building square footage. What we do like is to have general parameters that, you know, we have minimum parking ratio requirements. We have minimal landscaping requirements. So if the building does change, well, the parking is going to change along with it, right? There's general parameters that we still have to hit. It's not that we can take a 100,000-square-foot building and change it to 130,000 square foot and still have the same parking, you know, stalls. We still got to have those ratios. That's what we like about the SDD. But at the same time, we want to be able to have flexibility because a lot of these buildings that we've shown are purely schematic, right? And if I get a restaurant that, you know, they want to be 7,000 square feet instead of 5,000 square feet, I don't want to come back to planning and zoning commission and have to make a whole new modification of this. Same with that user. That would, that would really be challenging for us. So I think the SDD has those guardrails, right? Where you have minimum parking ratios, you have minimum landscaping requirements. Those are built in out of the framework of the SDD. We just think these additional modifications are really going to be critical to us using the SDD at the Enfield Mall site and are generally what we've used on other mall developments. So that was really all that I wanted to add. I'm happy to answer questions as we, as we go through this. But I think that was just kind of my initial two cents on it.
Any questions? Okay, because I got questions. Because as you increase, you decrease open space and the possibility of amenities. And this is written in language directed for your project. There are multiple places in this town that have five-plus acres that this SDD could be applied to. And it could be in anybody's neighborhood. So it's not just, you know, the square. And so now I'm thinking that a 30% increase without any public input is kind of putting a lot of pressure on staff and taking away a lot of the residents' voice. So to just say, oh, 30% increase in a building is not a big deal for the builder. It's a big deal for the residents because we live here. We're, you guys are going to come, you're going to knock the thing down, you're going to put the infrastructure in, and then you're going to sell the plots, which is fine. We understand that. But we have to live this. We have to live through the 10 years that you're proposing of construction. We have to live through the expansions without a voice. So again, I'm just talking as the chair, as one person, as a resident, a life resident here, that I don't want to have the residents lose their voice. That's my concern with some of this proposal. Also, as the years go by, commissioners change, staff changes. Some of this will get very blurred. And from my understanding and all of the classes I've taken with attorneys, they say the more specific you can be, the better it is. It clarifies what your intent is. This is too vague to me. I think we need lots of work on this before I would even consider anything. That's just my take on that. Anybody else? Christian?
Yeah, I am in agreement with what you first brought up about the concerns about them, you know, striking through proposed, you know, the inclusion of proposed parking areas and spaces, building footprints, so on and so forth. I am in agreement with that. I mean, I don't think we should remove those. I think, you know, it would be, I mean, for what it's worth, the applicant mentioned, or they're not the applicants, sorry, the public mentioned that they may be supportive of us not striking that anyway. But I mean, I think it's only fair that we keep that in there, like you're saying. I mean, because then they can come to us and say, hey, you know, we're not planning recreation area. We're not planning, you know, X, Y, Z. Like, I want to at least see it on paper if they're not doing it. Or if they are doing it, it is, it is the proposal. So I, I mean, I think the language is flexible enough for them to be like, hey, this is our proposed recreation area. This is our proposed parking area. But then, when the site plans come, we have the expectation that it may not match it exactly. So I would rather see the proposed parking areas and building footprints upfront with the acknowledgement that it may change slightly, you know, as so.
Right.
So, yeah, so I'm in, I'm in support of that. And it sounds like they're amenable, too. Yeah, I mean, I do kind of agree that 30% seems kind of a lot. In their comments, they sound, it does sound like the 20%, they could be willing to compromise at 20%. So maybe that's something to consider. I can see why 10%. It could be, it could be a little limiting. Maybe 20% is more of a consideration. But, yeah, I mean, I think generally their, their proposed changes, besides that first paragraph, they generally seem pretty reasonable to me. And again, the 20% might be a compromise for us. And as far as the extensions, I mean, I can kind of see their point. You know, it would be nice if we, if we saw everything through in 36 months, which would be within one of our terms, technically.
Right.
But, but I understand. And I guess the key there is that anything beyond 36 months would require an extension, which I think is reasonable enough for them to come and say, hey, you know, three years isn't enough. You know, we need another five years, which would be five years at a time. That's what they're proposing.
But under Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-3, the state only says five years. So that, that just kind of, 10 years is a long time.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's a tricky one.
My comment on the 10 years, that's a, that's a real hot button for us. And it partially goes back to the point that you just made, is I'm making the decision in the coming months to buy the asset and spend a significant amount of money in investment. And I'm making that decision based on what we're getting approved, you know, as we close on the property. If that were to change, three years down the road with a different council or a different commission, that, I can't take that risk, right? So unfortunately, I mean, these, these projects, this is a $250 million project. I'd love if I could develop this in three years. We'd do a lot more of them. But unfortunately, that's, it's just not realistic, right? Or it's probably not realistic. We've got a lot of these mall projects going, and they just take time, especially to do them right. So I think from our position is we're going to rely on what we're able to get approved upfront because we're going to make the investment, the long-term investment, to know that we can, we can depend on that. So having the possibility where that could completely change, you know, three years into the project, would, it just wouldn't work, right? It wouldn't be financeable with a lot of banks, too. So I think that's our main pushback on there is we do want to be realistic. You know, hopefully, this project does move very quick. I think it will move quick. But at the same time, the investment that we're making, we need to make sure that we're protected and really have the ability to develop the site through how long these, these types of developments take.
And we have to protect our town. So it's a two-way street here. It's not just all about your investment. It's all about, you know, you doing this. It's also the people who live here. We have an investment. We live here. We pay taxes here. We do business here. We shop here. We have to put up with the traffic. So it's not just what you're doing. And in reality, you're going to have 36 months plus another five years. That's eight years. So to add another addition, to add another five years after that, that would be 13 years. So that's what I'm looking at. So that's, that's all I've got to say at this time. Anyone else? Yes.
Is it okay just to address that one point?
Sure.
In terms of the timing? You referenced the Statute 8-3, which applies to site plans. You are, you are correct that it does require that site, work under site plans be completed within five years. There is, in addition to that, a five-year extension period. So that's where the 10 years comes from.
You can always come back to us after five years and within, and ask for another five years' extension.
But we're talking about the, the master plan. We're not talking about the site plan. We were, we were using the, the site plan statute as an analogy, saying, hey, well, if site plans are, you know, allowed for five plus five, then it would be beneficial to do the same thing for the master plan in this provision. So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Jenny?
Thank you. Yeah, well, you just said, so it's like deja vu. It's like the owners of the mall prior pretty much tried bullying us, saying if, you know, this didn't happen while we were backing out or we were moving. That definitely doesn't work. I guess what Madam Chair is trying to say is, we've gone through this. The mall was turned over before once. It was supposed to be something fictitious and great. And here you guys are in front of us. 10 years, I agree. A lot of the other wording seems okay to me. But also a resident, I don't want to sit here and watch demo for 10 years either without the proper seeing what's going on. I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say that, first of all, I trust that Woodsonia is going to do exactly what they say they're going to do. They're going to redevelop this property, excuse me, and in a wonderful way. We're just trying to come up with the regulations that, so we could all follow them and have something to be guidance. When I was reading through this, I agreed today, and actually Evan and I spoke earlier, we agreed that five years for the master plan would be reasonable with an addition five years. So I don't think we need to be talking about the 36 months anymore or anything like that because I think that that's absolutely reasonable. There's always the opportunity to modify these as, as time goes on. And quite honestly, a lot of the changes that are proposed, I think that staff can work with. There's still some things that we need to work out a little bit. Unfortunately, Don Poland, our consultant, had surgery this morning, so he was not available to review these. I really think that we're very close to finding a happy medium between what Woodsonia is seeking and what staff and the PCC is looking for. So, you know, Woodsonia has worked very, very hard on, on moving forward with this, as has staff. And, you know, I, I think that we're very close.
And I, I hear that they're doing what needs to be done. I hear that. But this does not just affect Woodsonia. It affects the whole town. And we have other places this could go into. And they're a reputable company. We don't know who's coming down the line. And we're, we have to consider all of those places, not just this one.
Right, of course.
That's, that's another concern. And I don't think we should just, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll do whatever they ask.
Right, well, of course. And we have to all agree on, on the regulations as, as they end up. So, and that's fine. You know, Woodsonia has taken over these, the Namdar malls before and have rehabbed them in the past. I think, Mitch, you have done four at this point?
Yeah, this will be our sixth.
Sixth. So, I mean, this is the real deal. They're going to do the work. So I, I don't want to, you know, say that, you know, they're asking for the world, but we just need to, it's basically a matter of wordsmithing at this point, I really believe, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Ken?
Yeah, as far as the 120 months, I don't really have a problem with that. I understand the 10-year timeframe, and I understand the explanation you gave about, you know, how it takes a lot of time. And you can, you can see, it's a large parcel, many, many, many varied type of buildings and businesses will be within it. And I can understand that. The five plus five, I mean, we want to reword it and make it five and five. Does that work for you guys, the five years plus the five?
I know the language that we're seeking is the 120 months of extension time in addition to the 36 months.
Okay.
I'll defer to Mitch on that and.
Okay, it was just what Laurie had just talked about. Okay, so, so hold that for a second.
Okay.
Okay. And I don't really have an issue with 30% to tell you the truth with this. And I don't really have an issue with 30 percent, to tell you the truth, with the size of this development. I mean, it seems to me that you want to give some flexibility to people who are developing properties. And, you know, whether it's a, it's a large property or maybe even a smaller property than what you have. And I can understand from the builder's standpoint that they have some issues with, you know, committing the funds without having some flexibility. So I don't really have a problem with that part of it. Thank you.
Chair.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with Ken. My concern was really the 30 percent. But I'm not too worked up about that. But 30 percent seems like a big change. The time, when you look at the work that has to be done, I think just the time to get the buildings out of there and then try to do the infrastructure to get all the plumbing and electrical and everything else to the spots where buildings are going is going to take a ton of time. And so I'm not too concerned about the 10 years. I think it's a long time. I'd like to see you be able to knock it out in three or four years and have a going industry. But so would you. But that's probably not going to happen. So I don't have a real problem with that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Frank?
I concur with Ken. And I think, the question I have is the length of time. If it hampers or is there a performance period on the grant you received? I don't want to jeopardize that. Is there a performance time on that? I know you received a large grant to make this whole thing possible. I don't want to see any action that we take here affect that state grant that you received. But I have no problem with the language here. But are you good with the grant?
Yeah, we definitely want to make sure that the grant is honored.
Right, so is a grant, is there stipulations to the grant that we, sometimes it's a performance period?
We're working through the details on the CIF Brownfield. It's a reimbursement though, so we won't get the money unless we complete the work. Where we do have timelines that we've agreed to are the two agreements that we've made with the town on our tax abatement agreement and then credit enhancement agreement. The tax abatement is on the first 10 years. There are thresholds that we have to meet or we're in default of that agreement and it goes away. Again, I sure hope you guys don't view us as NAMDAR. We do want to do, you know, a great community project here and haven't been able to do it elsewhere. And we have agreed to, you know, provisions. We have no interest in just buying this and sitting on it.
There's things that are plugged into this. That's why I'm asking those questions about. The other things that could have time restrictions on it or could, we could affect the performance of it.
Which they did. Yeah, we don't get any of those.
I don't want, I don't want to do that. I'm good with it, wait a minute, thank you.
Okay, Rob?
Hi, getting back to the changes on 5.60.1, section four. Maybe you could go over why specifically you want to add the things you're adding and remove the things that you want to remove. Because the way that it's worded right now, it looks like it's a recipe for disaster. It looks like it's loaded where you guys can go through and do things above and beyond what's approved because of the way the wording is. And I'm just, I'm a little confused at why the wording is the way that it is. Like, why maximum square feet of the building space and buildings use? There's no limit, so you can just do what you want with that. So I'm just curious why.
That in particular, the word maximum or just in general?
Just in general.
Yeah.
Explain like I'm five as far as why you're going through like all these, all the changes there.
Yeah, and again, it might be a non-issue if that provision, at the final provision of this regulation, which allows a less detailed master plan for developers who are not the end users of the entire site. It might already be encompassed within that. And that's one of the things we wanted to confirm with the commission tonight. But it really all boils down to, again, the fact that it's so difficult to predict with accuracy right now, many of these elements that go into the master plan. Because we, there will be other users who come in here with their own project teams and their own, you know, requirements and, you know, for how they do their business and build their buildings. And we just don't know that at this time. And, you know, we thought that one possible way to approach it would be to have a max, you know, maybe we don't know the precise square footage of each building, but a maximum square footage could work. Certainly if a building's smaller than, is approved, is allowed on a master plan, that's probably not a bad thing. You know, probably less impact, less parking spaces, things like that. And that's really what the intent of this is here, to give more flexibility. And maybe it is more appropriate to keep it limited to that situation where it's a developer who comes in with the master plan and isn't the end user of the entire site, as opposed upfront. For anyone who can come in, you know, a developer who is going to develop the entire site, maybe it's better to just push that stuff towards the end and in the situation that we're in here, to limit it and have that carve out. So I think that might be a good solution to kind of address the can of worms scenario that you were referring to.
Why do you want to get rid of the line residential unit mixed by number of bedrooms? Why do you want to, why do you want to remove that?
We just don't know that information yet. That's a guess.
All right. On the 30 percent thing?
Yeah.
If I'm in your shoes, I'm asking for 30 percent if I want 20 percent. I'm not going to ask for 30 percent if I'm expecting 30 percent because it's such a drastic change. It's, to go from 10 to 30, in my mind, is a lot.
And there were some suggestions in the letter today to potentially address that concern with, you know, allow the 30 percent, but maybe in certain situations, town staff has the discretion to send it back to you. Or, again, like we just discussed with the other provision, perhaps limit this to the final provision where, you know, it's a developer who comes in. It isn't going to be the end developer of everything. You know, certainly they hope that they can do part of it. But there are going to be other groups and folks that come in and see this plan, parts of this plan through.
That's all I got.
Okay, anybody else? So, yes, Laurie?
Thank you. A lot of this might be addressed when they actually do their master plan. So at that point, they need to come up with their Balkan area densities. And that's going to dictate how big or how many, how much the coverage is for buildings and, excuse me, and asphalt. So this may be a moot point because at this, when they come in with their master plan, they're going to have to come up with the new zoning regulations for the site. And they could, and that's what will dictate what can be built ultimately.
Okay, any, Josh?
Yeah, just to be clear, this has a lot to do with coming in with a master plan, I guess, overall. It's not a chiseled and stone plan. It's just allowing the developer that leeway. Being such a large project, yeah, it's going to take 10 years to develop or eight years, whatever it may be. But, you know, the master plan is, you know, what we're trying to do is, with these regulations, is to allow them a little bit of leeway because things are going to change as the sites get developed or as they bring in a new tenant or developer for a site. Things are not going to be chiseled and stoned, so they'll have that flexibility. But I believe they still got to meet all the requirements for coverages, parking, et cetera. And that's chiseled and stoned, the end result project. So I'm not overly concerned there with respect to that. You know, the overall timeframe of the three plus five plus five, I get it. I understand on a project of this size that, you know, it could take that long. But, you know, it is 13 years. It is, it certainly is still a big number. But, I mean, overall, given the project scope and size, you know, I get it. And I certainly support most of this, you know, the, again, the 13-year overall is a bit much though, in my opinion. And I look at it like, if it does go over, or if you need to go beyond the 10 years and you're 70, 80 percent done, who's not going to grant another special extension if need be? As long as you're making good efforts to get the project done. So that's it, Madam Chair.
Frank?
Yeah, just another comment. I was thinking about the time as well. You know, we're not in the best part of the country to work 24 hours, seven days a week. So I'm just thinking about inclement weather. It's not always perfect construction climate here in Connecticut. So that's where I was thinking too. It's not like you're going to have every single day out there where your people are going to be working. Before you're in Florida, you wouldn't need that kind of time. That's my opinion on the time wise. I'm looking at the area of the country they're in. Thank you.
Laurie?
So, gosh, excuse me. When the expiration is for the master plan, so if there's no site plans approved in three years or make it five, then that's what expires. Once they start building on it, there's no expiration anymore. Once they start building on, you know, from the master plan and start getting site development, then the master plan lays down. It lays down on the ground. There is no expiration. At least that's the way I interpret that.
All of more reason to not give them 13 years.
Exactly.
Well, I think we need to have expirations for site plans and expirations for the actual master plan.
Anyone else? If not, I'll open it up to the public because this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to come up and speak? Come on down, name and address, please.
Thank you.
Take a step back, you'll be back.
Good evening, commissioners. Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. First to address Commissioner Alimo. My brother is a superintendent and he builds very large buildings and they work all year. Just an FY. The winter doesn't stop them. And before I get into my comments, I have a question to the staff, Madam Chairman, through you. In the document that I got to work from and unaware of the fact that another proposal came out this afternoon, which annoys me that I didn't, as public, but I couldn't find section 4.10.2G, H and J, 4.30.19 in my regulation book. I don't know where they are. I haven't the current zoning book and those sections aren't in it. And so that's part of this regulation that you're talking about. And I think we need to make sure that when you folks are reviewing this proposal, that every place that sections are cited, you go look for them and try to figure out what they're talking about. It may not be them, it may be the office. So I'm through you, Miss Madam Chairman. And before I.
In our current regulations?
Page 70 of 144. So, Madam Chairman, I need a copy, unless it's going to go online, of whatever was now put out this afternoon because as the public, I didn't have a chance to review it. And I will be honest with you, I have spent a very long time reviewing this stuff because it's so vital to Enfield and its public. And I'm hoping that the public will hear me and start filling this room because this is about your future. I'm worried about Enfield's future. It erases the original intent of the SDD. The existing regulation was designed to rehabilitate properties in distress, not to become a developer's shortcut for building from scratch. Stripping out the vacancy requirement and building reuse conditions turns this into a speculative development tool and not a revitalization strategy. The proposed version removes critical protections. And these aren't just technicalities. They're what ensures the development is responsible, compatible and beneficial to Enfield. This proposal applies to any, I need you to hear that, any five-plus acre parcel in Enfield, not just the Enfield Square. That includes Mass Mutual, for example, and potentially even parcels in your own neighborhoods, commissioners. This isn't site-specific, it's town-wide. And maybe you need to consider that for this project. Maybe it needs to be site-specific. You're not just writing a regulation for one project, you're setting the standard for future development of Enfield. It must both support this redevelopment. I am totally in support of this redevelopment, so please do not read into what I'm asking you to listen to tonight. And protect the town from unintended consequences. It enables the parcel flipping, not community investment. This proposed regulation allows developers to come in, clear the land, install utilities and walk away, which is what this group that I just listened to said they were planning to do. Maybe not walk away specifically, but they're not going to be the ones developing. They're going to sell off pieces with no guarantee of what will be built. Enfield becomes a real estate transaction, not a community plan. The plan lets developers demolish, flatten and flip parcels with no binding standards for those who come after. We've already seen that when the NAMDAR group came into Enfield and they did that when they bought the property. Remember, they subdivided it and I'm not sure all of you were here for that. It legalizes vagueness. The proposed language is so broad, it's particularly practically meaningless. Developers can submit a vanilla master plan and make major changes later, up to 30 percent, up to 30 percent, without public hearings or commissioner oversight. That's not flexibility, commissioners, that's deregulation. Stick with the 10, modify minorly, like Commissioner Anderson mentioned, but 30 is too high. Commissioners, keep in mind the future. A parcel could be granted today, not built for years and possibly become totally different, such as splitting the building like you saw at Outback, for example, or parking and pad build outs like at Home Depot. These are all things you've already had in front of you in the past. Maybe not you, but past commissioners. Think about the mess that we've had sometimes. Look forward. It guts the infrastructure planning, removing required unit counts, bedroom breakdowns and land use plans undermines the ability to plan for what? Sewer, water, traffic, schools, public safety. If we don't know how many people are coming, we can't serve them and we can't budget for them. Taking out those units is vital because they're not building what the mall was. It was retail. They're considering or planning to put in housing units. You need to understand what it means, what you would tell them they had to build if they were only building housing units. It deletes the public amenities. Green space, trails, playgrounds, landscaping, recreation. These are the first things that are stripped out. Why? Because they cost money. Because they cost money. And developers know they're not enforceable under this version. Well, the one that I got to play with, not the one you got today. And once they're gone, they're gone. If amenities, trails, and recreation space are optional, they're never get built. The words must be in the regulation. And all of us, because we all attended the March 22 planning meeting on Zoom on that Saturday, it's specific. It told us, make sure it's in your regulation. If it's not written, you can't enforce it. It's almost like me coming back to you and say, hey, it was, we talked about it. It's in the minutes. Minutes are not enforceable. I learned that from Pheasant Hill. Think about the trail that was supposed to be built in the presidential section. And I'll bet you folks don't know what I'm talking about. It didn't get built. Remember the sidewalks that are in our regulations that don't get built. It fails future Commissioners. This isn't just about today. Once this language is law, future Commissioners who may not have this level of scrutiny or institutional knowledge are stuck with it. It's vague now. It'll be abused later, and it invites bad development with no tools to stop it. For example, Commissioners, Pheasant Hill. You see me in front of you on that subject. It locks us into a nine-year wait, which now sounds it's more like 15. Nine years. That's how long a developer can sit on an approved plan with zero site work, which still retains the zone. That's nine years of no tax revenue, no community input, no guarantees, anything will get built, or if it does, it is not what we hoped for and not what the developer will get away with it, because you have written the rule that allows it. Do you really think the people of Enfield want to spend the next nine-plus years driving through the heart of our town, staring at half-built structures, vacant lots, and blighted eyesore? That's exactly what we risk if we hand out approvals without firm timelines, clear requirements, and accountability. We deserve better than a decade of visual economic decay. And I didn't bring it up here, but there was an article in the North Central News by State Representative John Santinella, who talks about how this mall has sat as an eyesore for 10 years. I'm sure they have better plans for it, and I look forward to seeing it. It breaks the chain of accountability. If the master plan isn't binding, if the amenities aren't required, and if each parcel is treated as separate, there's no accountability. Each buyer starts fresh. No one is responsible for the whole. I understand why this developer wants that opportunity, but keep in mind, this is at your feet. It's important for you to pay attention. It damages the adjacent neighborhoods. Without density limits, design standards, or use requirements, this can create traffic nightmares in incompatible uses and out-of-scale buildings, 30% in residential areas. I'm trying to impress on you that you are writing a regulation that will go everywhere in Enfield, five acres plus, not just here. Keep it in mind, and we're talking about maybe your backyard. This proposal is being rushed without public understanding. It's not public input. But the public doesn't understand what you're prying to work on, in my opinion. This proposal hasn't received the meaningful discussion until tonight, yet there's already, there's a push by the staff and maybe the office and who else to move it forward for a vote in just a matter of weeks. That's not how responsible zoning policy is made, especially not when we're talking about a town-wide regulation that could reshape development across Enfield for decades. A zoning overhaul of this magnitude deserves careful deliberation, maybe months, and I'm sure that's not what the developer wants to hear. It needs full public input. It needs multiple workshops. It needs rigorous editing, and with all the stakeholders at the table. Anything less is rushed. It's reckless. It puts the town at a serious risk. It prioritizes the developer's convenience over community needs. And let's be honest, this proposal wasn't written to protect Enfield. It was written to make it easier for the developer to develop and maximize their profit and build this project. That's not planning. It ignores the town's own POCD, which I sat on and took years to get done, for anybody else who was sitting there with me. And it ends the Enfield's Plan of Conservation and Development, it calls for responsible growth, walkable neighborhoods, preserved green space, and compatibility with existing communities. This proposal violates all of those. It hands over local control. This plan weakens your role as Commissioners. Please don't give away your job. It hands over the enormous latitude to the developers and town staff. It reduces your authority to enforce real standards. You should be setting the rules, not reacting to vague proposals with no teeth. And remember, future Commissioners won't have the context you have now. This won't, they won't know what was said in this room or what the original intent was. If the regulation is vague, they'll be powerless to stop bad development. You have the responsibility to write this clearly, because once it's law, it's permanent. And I understand the developer's need to move things forward so his project can happen, and Enfield will be better for it. But you are responsible to make sure it's what Enfield really has to get. It will be precedent, used again and again. If passed, this becomes the model for every future five-acre development in town. The mall might be the first, but it won't be the last. We'll see the same loopholes used in other neighborhoods. We will, we need development, but it must be planned. It must be predictable and accountable. This proposal is too vague, too developer-friendly, and too risky, in my opinion. I urge the Commission to slow down, to restore the key requirements. If you haven't had the time to really sit and try to digest your current regulations to the proposed regulation, to the one that Mr. Pollan wrote, to the one they're proposing, and to the one that you just got this afternoon, you have not done your job. And it's hard. It was hard for me, and I'm not you. Let's write a regulation that encourages good development without giving away the store. In my opinion, this is not smart planning. It's surrendering our standards. Commissioners, I'm asking you to please reject the proposal as it's written at the moment. Take your time and write what you know we need. We need development. I'm not going to disagree. It needs to be planned. It needs to be predictable. It needs to be accountable, not built on wishful thinking and hope for 10 years or whatever many it takes. At a minimum, if you're not hearing anything I say, at a minimum, restore the safeguards. And I thought it was funny when I heard guardrails. Anybody been following guardrails up at the Capitol lately? And we got thrown them here tonight. Don't give Enfield's future away. Don't go on a blank promise. And please just don't let the bulldozer come through, because Enfield is better than that. And I know I'm asking you a lot, and I know I'm asking you to take the pressure, and I'm hoping you're hearing my worry, because this is not just about us. This is about who lives here after us. I've made copies of this, because I know that it's probably a little daunting to hear somebody come up and say what I just said. I will give them to the staff, and I hope you'll at least take a minute and hear what I asked you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Seaman, would you like to respond?
Sure, just briefly, and in no particular order. This is not Woodsonia's application. This is an application that is submitted by the town and has been going on for quite some time, as we understand it, the town's in the process of revising its entire zoning code, not just these SDD regulations. So this isn't, you know, this isn't something that, this is not our application, and it certainly does apply to all property within the town. So I wanted to make that quite clear. We're simply proposing some modifications, because we have a great interest in this regulation, because it affects Woodsonia's property interest. So in terms of timing, there have been a number of workshops. Don Pollan's your consultant with staff, as we understand it, has been working on this regulation for many months. It's not something that's, you know, all of a sudden being considered for the first time?
I'm going to have to correct you on that. We did receive it back in March. We talked about it for a very brief time, and we were going to revisit it, and we haven't revisited it yet. So it hasn't been an ongoing discussion on this regulation. So I do want that to be correct on the record.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
In terms of the comment that this is a developer that's simply going to walk away from the project, I mean, I don't think that even requires a response. I hope that the Commission and the town sees Woodsonia for what it is, a reputable developer that fully intends to do what it says it's going to do. That's the reason we're here tonight. We want to make this Enfield Square Mall project better than what it is now. The individual who just spoke mentioned a comment about what is there now, 10 years of eyesore. Certainly, what's hopefully going to be proposed and hopefully come to fruition is going to be a much better result for the community than what is there right now. One thing, too, that I wanted to point out is the Capitol Region Council of Governments has provided comment on the draft regulations. And I'm quoting, "Staff commends this proposed amendment as it aligns with the regional POCD in a number of ways. Specifically, the amendment aligns with the strategy adaptively to reuse vacant or underutilized commercial spaces to develop a competitive and inclusive regional economy. The amendment also has the potential to diversify the region's housing stock and increase the amount of housing that is attainable for regional residents." And that's dated March 31st. So we certainly hope that you'll consider our proposed modifications to the language. Woodsonia wants to be a part of this community, and it certainly is not looking for any shortcuts. It wants to develop this property and present something that the town can be proud of. In terms of, the last speaker's suggestion that this should go out many, many months, Mitch, I'll let you, this process, Mitch, I'll let you talk to that in terms of how that's going to affect the project altogether. But if this proposed SDD goes, you know, many months in the future, how's that going to impact your ability to develop this property?
You know, I just don't know that we're going to be able to use the SDD, right? That's our, that's our big challenge is, there is an existing zoning, you know, that overlays the mall that we discussed, you know, extensively with Lori and her staff that gives us, you know, an ability to develop it, not in the way that we would like to, not in the way that I think will bring it to its highest and best use. So our hope is that we can have clarity on the SDD. I thought a lot of the comments from the previous speaker, I understand. You know, I understand there's a broader consideration here for Enfield, and maybe this is a zoning that's appropriate for the mall or, you know, larger development sites. You know, we, we just want to do a great project. We want to do a community project, and we have done this in quite a few communities. So our goal is just to bring in a zoning to Enfield Square that allows us to do a mixed-use development like this. And that's kind of why we're here, and we've been working on it for the past 18 months. So that would be our goal.
Laurie?
So we have been working on this since January. Don, staff, staff had worked with Woodsonia. Obviously, we've had a lot of conversations about many, many things. And we said, we will come up with some newer regulations that will fit you and others, because, and that was even referenced by Mary Ann this evening, and this is, this is for all of the five-acre properties that are dilapidated, that are vacant and unused. And so Woodsonia did comment on some of these regulations, because we said that, you know, we let them see them, and it's been on the agenda for a couple of months now. And we have really worked very hard to try to get wording that's going to accommodate everybody. Quite honestly, the current regulations for SDD, I don't think that Woodsonia would be eligible, because that's for adaptive reuse of buildings. So, you know, I think that these are very good, and I think that we're very close to coming up with the solution to, and regulations that will fit everybody. I think that it's just a matter of minor wording at this point. And, you know, I, this is our fix. This is the fix for our town. Now, you've got to remember that, you know, this is, this is new, so it's a little bit hard to conceptualize, but that master plan becomes your zoning. And so things will be required based on that zoning that is set with the master plan. And then, you know, we're talking about, I mean, we're getting into the weeds about how much time we're going to allow for it until it expires. Nobody seems to have an issue with the content and the layout of it.
I do have issue with some of the verbiage that's being removed.
Yeah, I agree with that. And we believe that, quite honestly, if there was no proposed changes, that they'd be fine, that like this applicant would be fine, because we added that item F, and then today they've added another one, another section that makes it G, so.
I'm talking about the one that we received in the packet, the 418 one that we received on Friday. We're taking out landscape, recreational use, and all of that. I have issues taking that stuff out, because it kind of makes everything blurred.
Right.
And vague.
And staff agrees with that, and we've actually made that comment to them. And the point being is that if we take those things out, it's not necessarily true for all the applicants. But with the applicant, with the section F that Don had created, it allows for them to come in with the master plan that is a little bit vague, but then we're going to, you know, they're going to have site plans that are going to exhibit what is in that master plan. So they'll probably have a section of the master plan that says, this is where we anticipate putting residential development. This is where we anticipate putting maybe a large box store. This is where we anticipate placing little shops and restaurants. And that's kind of what they've shown us already. This is where we anticipate putting a hotel. So that is, in general, what they're proposing. We will then take that, and they will develop each site plan separately. So you're going to have that concept plan. You're going to have the zoning as it is set with the master plan. But like I say, I agree. I don't think that we should take them out, and I don't think it will affect them. They are a little leery of that, and maybe it's just another conversation that we have. But I think that these are actually really good regulations, and I think that we will find that we're going to get an excellent development from them, whether it be this one or others. And there are others in town that we're already thinking of when we wrote these.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a suggestion. We have a regulation meeting, review meeting scheduled for next week, correct?
Yes.
On the 30th. So I would suggest we dedicate that meeting to this particular SDD.
We could do that.
And go through it much more thoroughly, including discussion of the changes and all that.
Yeah, that's true.
And we table this tonight.
Yeah. We do have a problem with that, because this is actually on the agenda as an application, not a...
Right. This is now a public hearing, and we can discuss it in a workshop.
Ah, okay.
But I would gladly...
You want, then we dedicate to our dedicated meeting?
Public hearing.
Dedicate a...
Well, the public hearing is still open.
Public hearing is still open.
And it doesn't close until June 21st. Well, it... I mean, that, we have to close it on June 21st.
No, we don't. This is our application. This could stay open forever.
So we could still be working on it.
Not that we wanted to.
We don't have to make decisions on this tonight. We can still continue to have conversations for each time, but...
Okay, but this... Okay, but this would not be a subject for a discussion during a regulation review meeting?
No.
Or, okay.
No, we can't do that.
Madam Chairman, is the public still allowed?
I'm sorry...
But the public has...
Yes, we will in one second, please.
Madam?
Well, just let me, then I think what we should do is we should dedicate another public hearing to this and have a chance to get, see some more changes and us digest the changes more. Because obviously, there's a lot of diverse opinions here tonight. So we need to settle on that amongst ourselves and think about that a little more.
Question?
So I would suggest we table a public meeting, public hearing.
I just wanted to, first off, address that what I'm hearing from the public is a misunderstanding. And I think we all know and I think we're on the same page. We've talked to Don and staff about this. But just to clarify for the public is that these regulations don't mean that if you abide by the regulations, you're just a checkmark and your whole tenure project is approved. Right? So this is them submitting what's effectively a zone change. So we've talked about this. We have a lot of discretion as a commission. We have a lot more discretion to address zone changes than we do site plan remove, site plans and even special permits.
Then I don't even...
So they can provide everything here and, you know, they provide us the plan, the landscape, you know, landscaping, parking, you know, all their proposals. That's not an automatic shoo-in. We still have to see if it, you know, meets the POCD and fits and is suitable for Enfield. So we have that wide range of jurisdiction there. It's not an automatic checkmark. So I just wanted to clarify that because that, I think, is a misunderstanding that I was hearing. And then even besides that, even if we approve the master plan, they still have to come through with all the site plan reviews. So there is that extra level. Another misunderstanding, too, is the word guardrail was thrown out there and requirements. So to be frank, the section we were talking about, and I had mentioned in the beginning about 5.60.1A4 where it talks about what the master plan shall include. It shall include all proposed access and egress, et cetera, et cetera. That's not requiring them to have everything. It's requiring them to include it in the plan. So, for example, in that section, it tells them to include all, you know, the number of residential units. If a master plan doesn't have residential units proposed, they're not going to put that on the master plan. If, even if we don't strike out, you know, if we go back to the original and we don't strike out recreation areas, this section is not requiring them to put recreation areas in their master plan. This is just saying if they have a master plan...
And I hear what you're...
If they have to include it if they're planning for it.
But if it's not in there, someone comes along, sees that they want to build something and it does include residential, there's no recreational, I can not...
No, yeah. I'm in agreement with you and we should keep all that in there because if somebody comes to us and they, again, like, kind of like what I said before, if they leave out recreation and we're like, "No, this is, you know, you're including residential in here. We want to see recreation and open space." So that, so we will have broader discretion to work with the applicant. Because, again, they're coming to us with a master plan. It's going to be a discussion. It's not, they're going to first come to us with an informal master plan. So we're going to have that discussion. They come to us with no recreation area included? It's not required. But we can talk to them and say, "Hey, you didn't include any recreation area. Why is that? Talk to us. Let's figure it out." Let, you know, we're going to say, "Hey, let's get one included." The applicant's going to say, "All right, well, we'll work with you." Okay? So I just wanted to clarify that those, that inclusion in subsection A4 is not a mandate that they include. So I just wanted to clarify that. But as far as, something we haven't talked about, and to staff's point, I think, about the timing, well, we've kind of talked about it, sorry. But to staff's point about the timing, I know that Lori had mentioned about, or is it, the SDD being established. So it talks about the SDD is established and site plans are approved. So I think we might have, we might want to shore up that language to say, you know, what makes the SDD be established? Is it the approval of the first site plan? Is it the approval of all the site plans? So I think that's additional language we have to include because that, the whole timeline discussion kind of depends on that. Right? Because three years to complete the whole project, to have all the site plans approved and that's very different than three years to approve the first site plan. And finally, the last thing I had, which was the one we hadn't quite talked about, was subsection A7, which is, "The master plan shall, along with the master plan, the applicant shall submit building elevations, renderings and a description of materials to be used in the design of buildings." So my question, and maybe the developer here can, they didn't strike that out. So I'm wondering if that, is that too specific? Because that does strike me as pretty specific as you're coming here telling us, you know, you may not know the exact, what the building's going to look like, but this would require you to tell us more or less what the building's going to look like.
Sure, I can respond to that. And if you go to that final provision that Don drafted regarding the less detailed master plans, this section is specifically...
Well, it just omits subsection four. Let me pull it down like this. It says, so in the original section F or your proposed section G, "In this scenario where a less detailed master plan shall be," the proposed master plan shall not have to comply with section 561A... Oh, seven. Oh, did I misread?
No, you're correct.
Hold on. Wait.
Too many papers.
Seven, oh, okay, seven, seven, sorry. Sorry, that was just a misread. Okay, so, okay, so we're on the same page. So that's the detail is too specific.
Yeah, exactly to your point. That is too much detail.
Yep, yep. Sorry about that.
Also, Walter?
So this copy we got today, what does the last page have to do with? Maybe a dumb question, but...
One, two, three, four, five.
Then what's this?
Trucks, trailers...
Just handing it to her.
Temporary truck trailers.
Storage containers.
Storage. Yeah, I think...
That's not part of what we submitted.
Storage containers.
There might have been a mix-up at the copier. This was part of a violation we sent out today for storage containers. The last page of Robinson and Cole's letter is just about a concluding statement that Woodsonia looks forward to addressing the commission. We'll make sure that is fixed to meet people at the copier today.
There was a ton.
And Mary Ann, if you'd like, you could have my copy.
Anybody else before I ask the public to come back up? This is a public hearing. So I... She's coming.
Mary Ann Turner, Seven Meadow Road. I don't know your name. I forgot, I'm sorry, Mitch. I want to thank you for being open to hearing what I said. Commissioner, you know, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, Christian.
Christian D. Intan...
Antonio.
Yeah.
You started down the thought of it being too specific if they come in with the master plan, that if it's not applicable, I'm using my language, you could step over it. That it's not applicable to what... But then you went on to go on and say, you got very specific a few minutes later. I'm sorry, I couldn't draft, get it down. The point is, if it's in there, you don't have to worry about enforcing it if we go by what you just said, that it's not part of what they brought in. I'm going to call it the vanilla master plan. Okay? Because that's what they're trying to tell you they need. And I am not saying that you shouldn't take it under advisement. I'm asking you to think. So if they come in with a vanilla master plan, keep all, I'm asked, keep everything in there. If it's not applicable, then it's exactly what you just said. You'll step over it because it's not necessary. And when the residential building or the new grocery store or whatever the heck else comes down the pike comes, they're going to have to come in front of you as, with, I'm going to, I believe it's a site plan, and then they're going to have to follow whatever regulations they're supposed to follow and you're going to talk about roof tiles and siding and all the rest of it. So, but what I'm most worried about, and Madam Chairman, I'm not aware of what's been going on for 18 months. I'm not aware, as the public who I'm hoping are listening to me are aware, that the office staff has been drafting copy and wordsmithing for 18 months. We don't, we, the public, don't know that. We only know tonight. And that's what you need to hear. The time that all this has been going on, I get it. I get it. If I sound frantic or worried, I am because I have been in this zoning seat a long time and I have seen commissioners come and go. Many of you have never even been here since I've been playing in this game. And there's so many times that we have come in here with good intentions to build a certain type of development and then years later, something changes. And usually, it's the commissioners and they have to reread, reinterpret, refind out of the attic documents. Not the public at large is not like me who keeps 15 inches of documents on pro, things that come in front of you. So Commissioner Christian, I'm going to go with your first name. Thank you for thinking a bit broadly. But I'm asking all of you, keep it in mind. Keep as much stuff in the bag as possible. If it's ambiguous and you don't need it, step over it. But don't allow to wipe it out because once it's gone, that's the law. That's the land, rule of land, right? And even if you realize in five years that this didn't go quite as you had hoped or you said, "Oh, boy, we should have done," you can do it for the future, but you cannot do it for the past. So this project would have what it'd have, or the five-year one on Shaker Road or wherever else, okay? Please understand, once they sign in, they're in. And yes, I am a Podolsky public hearing person, so sometimes I will come back and forth depending on what I hear.
Okay. Lori?
Madam Chair, I truly believe that we are closer than is being suggested to getting these regulations to the point that they will be, sorry, that they will be usable and usable for anybody that might apply. I just think that we're dealing with some of the timeframes. I think that we could work a little bit more on the wording and definitely define at what point the actual master plan lands on the land and is there forever. The other stuff I think is easily overcome and perhaps just a meeting with Woodsonia Group and staff, we could get this done pretty quickly. And this has been on the agenda for two months, I think. And it's been on the website, so people have been able to read it and they're not here. So...
Joe?
I'd like to follow on Ken's recommendation that we table this for one more meeting to give staff and Don time to get together and work out a little bit of wording that seems to be concerning everybody and then phone on it at that meeting. And that'll give us some updated information as well, hopefully sooner rather than later, and put this to bed. So I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second.
Did you want to speak?
Just one suggestion. Is there a possibility to get Mr. Poland here for one of the public hearings to get his input?
That would be through staff.
We'll have to ask. Like I said, he had surgery this morning, so it was, and we're not expecting these changes, so...
Just a suggestion.
So we can ask, absolutely.
Just a suggestion.
So we have a motion and a second.
Do you want anybody to have any more conversation?
Any more conversations?
Applicants or otherwise?
So this is just to table XZA 25-02. We, yeah, we'll need a roll call to table this.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Secretary.
Can we hear him do that?
We're just going to table it.
Yeah.
To table?
No. Just a clarification.
Go ahead.
So we're not going to be discussing this at our next workshop because of the public hearing. Just want to make sure.
At the public hearing, we can't.
No, I just want, I know you said that and want to make sure it's on the record.
Yeah. Okay.
We want to put a date on this one, move.
Well, hopefully, we'll take it up at our next meeting, but right now, it's tabled until May 8th. Is that where our next meeting is?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, please.
Linda DeGray?
Four.
Franco Imo.
Four tabling.
Four tabling.
Kenneth Talinski?
Four.
Vincent Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronellis, four.
Okay.
Thank you members of the commission.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for chiming in on Zoom also.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion for a five-minute recess.
Hold me.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Five minutes. Five minutes. We're back at session at, what is that, nine? What does it say?
8:52.
Oh, 8:52, I'm sorry. I'm trying to see that. Mr. Secretary, public hearing, 3121, please.
Yes. The Infill Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, April 24, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Infill Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3121. Text amendment application for Table 5.20 and Section 5.20.1 to add language of use of a car wash to the BR zone with conditions. Russell Speeders Car Wash of Connecticut LLC, applicant. Joseph P. Williams, Representative, BR Zones.
Applicant, name and address, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commission members. Nice to see all of you. I'm Joe Williams. I am an attorney and partner in the law firm of Shipman and Goodwin at One Constitution Plaza in Hartford. And I've been practicing land use law across the state of Connecticut for a little over 30 years. I want to begin by just commending all of you for the time and effort you volunteer for your town. And I thank you for your patience in hanging in there to hear our proposal. Very proud to be here before you, representing Russell Speeders Car Wash of Connecticut. With me is Peter Jesky of Connecticut Valley Development. Peter is the preferred developer for Russell Speeders Car Washes in Connecticut. Russell Speeders is an established and successful builder and operator of car washes. They've been doing that for over 50 years. They're based in Norwalk, Connecticut. And they have over 30 locations in Connecticut and other states, including in Manchester and Bloomfield here in Connecticut. Russell Speeders is very positive on Enfield, and it would like to invest in Enfield and redevelop a prominent retail site with an abandoned restaurant on it, on Hazard Avenue, with a new car wash facility. So the text amendment that we've proposed is intended to give us the ability to make an application to you later on to do that. So with that introduction, a few words about your existing zoning and your plan of conservation and development of relevance to this application. As you probably know, currently, car wash is allowed in Enfield only in the BG zone, the Business General Zone, a pretty limited area. Meanwhile, your POCD emphasizes the importance of increasing commercial development in town. It expresses a concern for the future prosperity of the town with increased vacancies in retail space. And it adopts a goal of promoting commercial development by allowing greater diversity in commercial uses in the commercial districts. Our proposal seeks to do exactly that. And let me first say what our application does do and what it does not do. We have tried to create a targeted text amendment to allow car wash use in the BR zone under certain conditions. As you know, BR is the Business Regional Shopping Center Zone under certain conditions. And no other zone in town is affected by our proposal. It pertains only to the BR zone. We are not seeking permission to build a car wash on any particular property right now. So approving this application would not approve a car wash being built on any particular property. It's only a text amendment to the zoning regulations. And that amendment would simply allow us to come back before you at a later date with an application for special permit for a specific site, which would then be given a full review of everything that you review in a special permit application. You have the, essentially, one paragraph statement of our proposed amendment. Just wanted to tell you a few things about why we chose to propose the specific terms in there. And this is, this is really only an amendment to the use table for the business zones. So Part 1 of the amendment just adds an SP to the row for car washes under the BR column. So that would just simply, of course, provide that a car wash is allowed by special permit, not site plan, but by special permit in the BR zone. And then, and I really was inspired, you know, to do the next part by your existing use table, where you have all the notes at the end of the table that have certain conditions for, for some of the uses. And so we tried to propose some conditions that would allow the commission to have control over what, what types of properties and what types of use would occur there. So we proposed to add a new Paragraph 25 at the end of the use table that would put conditions on the use of car wash in the BR zone, only allowing it in planned commercial developments. And that's consistent both with the BR zone and with Section 5.30 of your regulations. Basically, it already says that you can only have planned commercial developments of more than 10 acres in the BR zone. But it also, we believe, promotes traffic efficiency because you are having this car wash option available to people who might already be coming to the regional shopping center and, you know, going to the grocery store or gas pumps, or buying some other things. And so it promotes the efficiency of trips, if you will, because people are already there. And then they can take advantage of other services without having to drive to other parts of town. And then 25A would require that the lot be a congregate of parcels of at least 10 acres total, not more than 15 acres, and have frontage on a state highway. We chose that because, obviously, that's then going to put a car wash use potentially on your major commercial corridors, retail corridors, where it, you know, it's an appropriate location for a car wash. B is, the lot does not abut a residential zone. And we thought that was important because it will, it will have a sort of a baked-in condition that will avoid any, you know, potential impacts on residences near a car wash because you cannot, under this regulation, put a car wash in a BR zone if you're right next to a residence, residentially zoned property. And so the questions that could come up, you know, about whether you're impacting residences by noise or hours of operation, or whatever it might be, it's already taken care of because you're not allowed to put it there under this regulation. And then last, we have a requirement in C that a car wash be automatic and staffed by at least one onsite attendant during business hours. And this, this really aligns with the, kind of the modern model of the newer car washes. It helps ensure a professional operation is going on. And it avoids what some people don't like about some other kinds of car washes. It avoids the 24/7 kind of self-service operation when you can drive in there whenever you want and do your thing on your own. This limitation on the use specifies that somebody has to be working there. It's more the automatic kind of thing that people go through with the attendant onsite. And so if the business has to have an attendant onsite the entire time it's open, they don't keep it open 24 hours. That's just the reality in the marketplace. So you have that supervision and that professional operation. And you do typically do not have 24/7 operation. So that's the language. And as I, you should have a cover letter from me that kind of explained the parts of the POCD that we thought the regulation amendment advances and some of the points in favor of it. And you'll, you'll see in there, I pointed out that we believe the BR zone, as you have them already in Enfield, is a good location for car wash because of the efficiency for traffic that I talked about. And the conditions limit the number of eligible parcels. So it's manageable for the commission to not have to be as concerned about how many places is this going to be allowed to happen. And as I spelled out in the letter, and, and the staff summarized, I think, in their report, we believe our proposed amendment advances several goals of your POCD, to promote commercial development, to reuse vacant commercial property, and to update the zoning regulations and diversify the commercial uses that are allowed in those districts. Also, approving this application will help attract investment and help improve the economic vitality of important retail corridors in Enfield and the tax base of the town. And I mentioned the staff report. Just wanted to note that and say, we take no issue with any of it. We thought it was well done. It is true that if a property is in an aquifer protection area, then that property can have a car wash only if it's connected to public water and sewer. But that's a requirement that exists independently of this amendment. It's not affected by this amendment. So that would still be a requirement, no matter what. And we hope to show you later, by filing a special permit application for a specific property, that the, the one that we're interested in is already connected to public water and sewer. So that would not be an issue. Last, if I could, does the commission all have the letter that was submitted by Attorney Landelina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So you have Attorney Landelina's letter. And he states some objections to our amendment that I wanted to address. That is my last point. And as he alludes in his letter, Attorney Landelina, as I'm sure you all know, represents the owner of the Golden Nozzle Car Wash in Enfield. On his second page, he says, you probably know, an out parcel directly in front of 95 Elm Street already contains a car wash. That's the Golden Nozzle, of course, located at 109 Elm Street. So on behalf of that owner of another car wash, this letter is clearly trying to stifle competition in Enfield. But this is America, and we like competition. In fact, it's protected by law. That's why we have an antitrust act. And competition is good for the consumers of Enfield, of course. It's good for everyone except for the business that doesn't want competition. But it's certainly not the business of a planning and zoning commission to prevent competition. And I think we all know, you don't get investment and redevelopment that way. But just to turn to the, the legal point that Attorney Landelina made about the uniformity principle. He's referring to Section 8-2 of the statutes. That's the Zoning Enabling Act that gives every zoning commission the power to adopt zoning regulations. And it puts some limitations on your authority in adopting regulations. But I would contend that he misstates the uniformity principle. And he's really overapplying it. The uniformity principle does not count the number of parcels that a regulation applies to and kick in if it's a small number, or be fine if it's a large number. Rather, it requires that regulations be uniform for types of land uses throughout each district. But the uses can be subject to special permit. And they can be subject to standards set forth in the regulation for obtaining a special permit. That's what we're asking for in this amendment. That's what your use table already does with all the notes you already have in there for conditions on special permit uses. And there is a Connecticut Supreme Court case I'd like to share with you involving an appeal by Ron Cari in Windsor Locks that illustrates the point. You all might remember, because it's right down the road, of course. About 25 years ago, Ron Cari fought with another business about opening another valet car parking service right next to their property. And that case went up to the State Supreme Court because it had to do with a zoning regulation like the one that we're proposing, and an argument about the uniformity principle. So apologies in advance. I don't usually like to drop case law on zoning commissions. But given that you have a letter from a lawyer making a claim about that specific issue, I thought it would be helpful for you just to see the one case that I think is on point. If I can hand it out, Madam Chair.
Give it to staff.
And I think would be relevant. Do you want me to just call?
Staff, thank you. Thank you.
I just did it as 2, 5, and 5 because I was going to hand out 5 in the middle and 5 at the end. But no, they're all the same thing.
Okay, they're all the same thing?
Yeah.
You don't have time to read them all?
Not yet. Thank you.
So in this case, and you can see on the first page of, a very good attorney argued the case for the defendant who had actually proposed the text amendment. And I saw, I highlighted a few points that I'll, I'll take you to. But if you turn to the second page, you can see that it's an appeal of the Windsor Locks Planning and Zoning Commission granting the application of Frank Bociero Jr. to amend the zoning regulations to allow for valet parking in certain business zones along Route 75 in Windsor Locks by special permit. But I think you should see more of the exact language that was involved because it's a useful comparison to what we're proposing. If you go all the way to the second to last page, you'll see a footnote 8 near the bottom that's highlighted. This is page 12 of the printout. See that? So this tells you exactly what the language was. The zoning amendment set forth required criteria for granting a special permit for airport valet parking use. And it was five different parts. Part 1, parcels of land existing as of October 1, 2001, fronting on and possessing an existing direct access to Route 75 in a business zone, which contain existing buildings and improvements committed to uses, which substantially underutilize the parcel's parking capacity, and due to unique characteristics are unlikely to fully utilize such capacity if and/or when developed as some other permitted use in the underlying zone. That's just part 1. Very specific, obviously. 2, substantial benefit to the town. 3, compatibility with the surrounding area. 4, setback minimum 200 feet from Route 75 and utilizing only that portion of the lot in excess of the minimum lot area required in the district. And 5, screening from Route 75 and neighboring properties. So very detailed, very specific regulation. Pretty obviously, trying to limit it to apply only to one property. But then if you go back into the case decision, most of the discussion at the beginning is about a notice issue. So if you go all the way to page 7 at the bottom, that's where we get to the uniformity. And I'll, I'll come right to the point on it. So the Supreme Court is presented with a P&amp;Z Commission's decision approving that regulation language that we just talked about with those very detailed, specific conditions about properties involved. And at the bottom of page 7, the court relates that specifically, the plaintiff asserts that the criteria set forth in the zoning amendment, which limit the applicability of the amendment to parcels of land located on Route 75 that were in existence prior to that date, violate the uniformity requirement of Section 8-2A because similarly situated landowners are treated differently and in an arbitrary manner unrelated to the health, safety, or welfare of the public. We disagree. So this is the, this is the issue that Attorney Landelina raises in his letter, the uniformity requirement of Section 8-2A. That's why I'm drawing you to this part of the case. And the court then talks about the great authority and discretion that a P&amp;Z Commission has in adopting its regulations. You see at the bottom of that page 8, the court quotes the relevant part of the statute about uniformity. statute about uniformity. "All such regulations shall be uniform for each class or kind of buildings, structures, or uses of land throughout each district," and I'm just skipping to the relevant part here, "and may provide that certain classes or kinds of buildings, structures, or uses of land are permitted only after obtaining a special permit," yada, yada, "subject to standards set forth in the regulations and to conditions necessary to protect the public health, safety, convenience, and property values." So then the court says, "As is apparent from that text, the same statute that requires uniformity in the regulations also specifically authorizes special permits or special exceptions." And then if you flip over to the next page, the court says, "The fact that the statute explicitly authorizes special permits demonstrates the legislature itself recognized the need for exceptions to uniformity, and therefore, complete uniformity was not mandated. The special permit authorization in Section 8-2A allows a zoning commission acting in its legislative capacity to adopt regulations that allow certain uses within a zone by special permit, subject to legislatively prescribed conditions." So there, the court is telling us that you can do exactly what it is that we're proposing because you can have regulations that specify conditions on granting a special permit for a particular use. That's okay under the statute. So flipping to the next page, this is the last page of the text, page 10. "The Supreme Court held, 'The plaintiff claims that the criteria that limit the applicability of the amendment to parcels along Route 75 that have been in existence as of October 1, 2001 are arbitrary and unrelated to the health, safety, or welfare of the public. We disagree.'" And then you jump down to the end of the paragraph. "Limiting the applicability of the zoning amendment in this manner was not arbitrary because it enabled the commission to control the number of parcels to which the amendment would apply, thereby limiting the impact of the amendment on the town." That's one of the most important passages that I wanted to call out for you because the Supreme Court, again, is holding here specifically, "It's okay for you to do what we're suggesting, which is to have conditions that help you, as it said, control the number of parcels to which the amendment would apply, thereby limiting the impact of the amendment on the town." They're your regulations, so you're allowed to put conditions on a use that you allow under your regulations. Ultimately, the court held, "We conclude that the trial court properly determined the conclusion of the commission was supported by the record, and the zoning amendment did not violate the uniformity requirements of Section 8-2." A regulation with extremely detailed targeting one property, much more so than anything in what we're proposing, upheld by the Supreme Court specifically allowing these kinds of conditions, even if it does, and in fact, because it does, limit the number of parcels that it would apply to. So it's okay to control the properties that are eligible, and we're also proposing a special permit here, and that's the specific authority you have under the statute to put conditions on it. Last point on this is Attorney Landelina's letter also, at the end, references this Commission's decision a few years ago, in which you denied a zone change for a property at 94 Elm Street in front of that mall that you were talking about earlier. Proposed zone change from the B R to the B G zone, and it's, the letter states, "I recall during those discussions, the commission indicated that car wash facilities were not a good fit in the B R zone." I just thought it would be helpful for you to see exactly what you put in your minutes about that. I checked the minutes, and I would like to hand you the, an excerpt of the minutes from your March 11, 2021 meeting.
Thank you.
The discussion about this zone change for, well, it says 0 Elm Street, but it's to, a zone change application from Business Regional to Business General Zone to allow a car wash between Hanush and the mobile gas station in front of the Enfield Square Mall. I highlighted just a few of the statements commissioners, including Chair DeGray, made during that hearing because you'll, you can see, they all talk about the commission not being comfortable rezoning that particular parcel of property. You didn't know what the mall was going to be doing, as I read in here, wanted there to be a master plan, didn't want to open up all kinds of uses on this property, and didn't want to open yourselves up for a zone change on other parcels. And so there's comments along those lines. And I wasn't here, I don't know everything that was said, and I certainly respect Attorney Landelina, but I'm just telling you, your minutes do not reflect any statements about not wanting car washes in the B R zone. Rather, you're talking specifically about that other property and not wanting to see it rezone. That's what I read in your minutes, anyway. And Mary Ann Turner spoke there, too. So that's my, that's my response to Attorney Landelina's letter. I don't think you should have any concern under the uniformity principle in our amendment. We believe it's a good amendment, it's appropriately limited, it will allow redevelopment and reuse of vacant properties, and it advances your plan of conservation and development. So we respectfully request your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Staff?
Well, he addressed everything on my list because I was going to talk about that. He even came prepared with minutes, which I came prepared with verbal minutes. So just to reiterate, you know, this is a zone change, zone, text change application, right? Text amendment, and you have different requirements that come versus a zone change application. So this one, obviously, we are amending Table 5.20 to allow car washes with specific conditions. It does limit the amount of parcels that would be eligible, which is typically what a lot of zoning regulations tend to do. We set maximums on acreages, we set minimums on floor areas. I mean, zoning is flexible in that sense for development. Back in the time where Mr. Landelina mentions, references his application from when it was denied for a zone change, I did go back to that video on YouTube, and I did sit and watch it and listen to it, and it was denied because there was a lack of a master plan for that region. We were concerned about aesthetics, we were concerned about the vision, and quite frankly, the conformity with the P O C D. But again, that was a zone change. This is a text amendment. They're exploring a different option now to look at a car wash in a B R zoning district. The applicant has stated the P O C D findings, which I did verify by looking at our P O C D, that it would be concise in terms of helping economics and diversity in terms of commercial use, especially in our B R zone. Car washes are allowed in the other business districts. Ultimately, the decision is up to you as the board to make this determination as whether or not you'd like to add a car wash use for B R. And again, B R is for Business Regional. For those watching at home, it usually stands for our large-scale regional type of businesses, mostly larger uses like our restaurants, grocery stores, that kind of malls, essentially, anything with retail services, essentially. So if you do decide to make a motion tonight, you would just have to state a P O C D finding, which you can reference my memo if you'd like. If it is approved tonight, the newspaper publication would be April 26, which would make the effective date May 12, 2025. Other than that, there are no staff comments. The applicant did a great job of summing up all the points tonight.
Okay. Any one?
So across the street from that number two is the C V S now. So what zone is that? That's a B L, right?
Directly across the street you're talking?
Yeah, right across from where 99 is C V S.
Mm-hmm. That is Business Local.
And is car wash allowed in Business Local?
I believe so. Let me double check just to make sure.
I think only B G.
I believe it is only B G, but let me just check.
The why I say is because before C V S, there was a car wash there.
And of course, he has the use table as well.
So I don't know, was that zone changed? Was that zone changed, or was the regulation changed? So they?
The zone probably was changed.
So again, he's prepared. It is only allowed in Business General, so it's a pretty restrictive use, especially if you look at the locations of our zones in terms of aquifer protection. That was the main area that came to me with this location was the particular parcel this applicant is looking at for a car wash is outside APA, so we wouldn't have any APA concerns. But if there was an instance where this was suddenly applied to a new parcel that was changed to B R, and it would meet the eligibility requirements under the conditions, then they'd have to have public sewer hookup and their proper deep wastewater permit. I'm not going to get into the specifics because very rarely do you have a car wash that's on septic. And that's a whole different can of worms that I'm not going to get into.
I'm just, I'm just pointing that out, that there was a car wash across the street at one time.
Most likely, if you do see a use that was there before, then nonconforming. I don't, I can't really speak, I'd have to look into it some more to really figure out what happened.
Just to point a record, that's all.
Okay. Anyone else? Ken?
Yeah, I guess I'd be concerned about the proliferation of car washes throughout the B R zones. Sounds like we're trying to do too much here, to, just to accommodate one particular parcel from what I can see. I mean, there's a B R zone up near State Line, which could certainly accommodate a car wash, and there's the B R zone that we're talking about here. Basically opens up, I mean, you could, somebody could propose two or three car washes in those areas and scatter them around, you know, around, somewhere around Hazard Avenue, then up around the State Line. And I'm wondering if that many car washes is what we need. So I'm concerned about the, this, this may cause the proliferation of some additional car washes. You know, we've got one on Elm Street, two on Elm Street, actually, and there's, there's one on Route 140 down in East Windsor, which is not that far away. There's also the Magic Minute, former Magic Minute Car Wash, which I think when we, they came before us with remodeling that, their, their plan was also to redo the car wash. That hasn't been progressing that fast, but you're going to have another car wash in that area. So frankly, I don't, I don't have an issue with having one car wash, you know, where the, this is where the 99 Restaurant is, I guess. I have no problem with that particular thing. I'm just worried about allowing the zone change and then having car washes pop up all over the place.
Could I elaborate on that a little?
Sure.
And that, I mean, that point is heard loud and clear. We're sensitive to it in proposing this regulation. You actually have with our application package a fairly simple map like this from us, and it, it designates the properties that are eligible. So under the limitations that we proposed, it is only two properties, one on Elm Street and one on Hazard Avenue, that are eligible. The, the restriction or the prohibition on allowing car wash in B R zone on a lot that butts a residential zone that we put in here, that excludes the entire Mass Mutual campus that's in the B R up in the northern area of town. So you can't have a car wash there, and you really could only add one in one spot on Elm Street and in one spot on Hazard Avenue where the restaurant, as you mentioned, but that's all.
Georgie?
I was going to say that.
Okay. Well, would you be amenable to putting a distance between car washes? Because I'm just saying, you've got the, the area that you're talking about, but you could also put one on the other corner so that we would have some distance. Like, I know we have vape shops that, you know, like right next to each other. And we're, we've been talking about putting a distance between opening, more, the new ones are opening. So would you be amenable to something like that?
Yes, we would. What other corner, by the way, were you referring to?
I'm talking about, what's the name? I always forget that. Freshwater?
Oh, that's where Longhorns is.
Yeah, by Longhorns. That's, or Phoenix.
Phoenix Avenue.
Phoenix Avenue.
Longhorns on that corner.
Right, on the other corner, closer to 91. I don't.
Where Staples is.
Right, where Staples Plaza is.
I know what you mean, but there's a reason why, maybe staff recalls, or maybe Mr. Yaski does, I don't, but there's a reason why we did not identify that as being eligible under the zone change, that particular property.
I'm just saying that it is in the B R zone, so there is that possibility. So yes.
Funny that you brought that up because I was going to bring that up. I talked about it today, Lori. I'm like, maybe separation distances would be a good thing because, just like the smoke shops. I wanted to recommend maybe investigating a 1,000-foot separation distance, and that was my backup plan that I wanted to discuss, just as a way of protecting Enfield from that fear.
Yeah. I'm just saying, they, there might be a reason why they can't put it there, but again, it is in the B R zone, and with a new possib, whatever, we don't know exactly what the mall will do, there's the possibility on the other side of Hazard Avenue in the redevelopment of the mall. And it would also protect the businesses themselves from, because there will be a ring road in that mall area. So I'm just saying, there's possibilities and for protections of businesses and for traffic.
And from what I can tell on the G I S, just doing a quick look, a 1,000-foot separation distance would not disqualify your parcel.
Right.
Of course, that's what I was wondering. Because I thought maybe you were saying a couple hundred feet, and with a thousand, I thought, I hope I'm not doing all this for now.
Not again.
No, no, no. I'm just thinking some kind of separation so that there's not one car dealer, one car wash right next to another car wash, so that there's, and that can be confusing to the customer, and, oh, well, I've got the pass, and how come I have to pay you, but I didn't have to pay yesterday.
Right.
They don't know.
No, that wouldn't work here.
Right. So I'm just, I'm just thinking.
Can you give me a second if you don't mind?
Sure.
This is Peter Yaski that I introduced. Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Please talk into the mic and introduce yourself, please, and address for our record.
Sure. Peter Yaski with Connecticut Valley Development, 502 Halliday Avenue West in Southfield. I would like to talk to you for 30 seconds, Joe, but let me just bring up a point, and I think Georgie can verify this with the G I S. So when we, when we, when Attorney Williams and my client and I crafted this proposal, we did look at the other parcels, including the parcel where the Steakhouse is, as well as particularly the mall, because as Attorney Williams pointed out, we read your 2021 minutes. We know the mall is in flux in a particular, certainly focal point of the town. So as you may know, and maybe Georgie can, can look at the G I S as I talk, the mall is broken up into several parcels. I think there's a, and I'm going off of memory here, but I think there's a 35-acre piece, there's a five-acre piece.
There's 13 in all.
There's a bunch.
Right.
None of them fall within that 10 to 15 range. So I think the intent of our text amendment is that just the way it's written, without the distance restriction, would exclude the mall property. And as Attorney Williams pointed to, and I think even Attorney Landelina pointed to, the only two properties where our text amendment would be applicable are the Stop &amp; Shop Shopping Center, the 99 Restaurant that we're talking about, as well as, I call it, I think, I don't know if Best Buy's still there or not, I still call it the Best Buy Center where Kohl's is on Elm Street, so. But I'm, I think we'd be happy to discuss a distance restriction if that would, if that would help. But again.
Sure. And if you'd like to take a few minutes?
Sure. Thank you.
And I will talk, we can talk to staff. So, and, and with the G I S, there is 1,000 feet from, you know, the Stop &amp; Shop Center to the, I'm going to call it the Staples Center. I'm sure L L Bean would not be happy with that, but.
So 1,000 feet, it kind of stops in the middle of the L L Bean Plaza. I'm going to hold this up because all you have to see is the dark circle, not the green. The dark circle is the 100-foot, 1,000-foot radius, not the green, the black dark circle. So it kind of stops in the middle, but if you add that 1,000-foot buffer, it would disqualify the Kohl's Plaza because of the other car wash, as well as, I did the radius around Noble too. too, and it, it is pretty, I think it's a good radius for a protection clause essentially for this type of use. I mean, it's something that we could definitely use to investigate for convenience stores and smoke shops as well.
Okay. All right. Now, I'm just wondering if, because you never know what's, some of those front buildings in that plaza.
We currently have it for our liquor classes, of course, and marijuana regulations, which do work very well in protecting the uses from popping up next to each other.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you for that opportunity, Madam Chair, and 1,000 foot, it's fine with us.
Anybody else have any question? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a question or comment, but I mean, we have zoning districts for specific reasons.
Right.
And, and this is not allowed in a BR zone. The town, when they created the zoning districts, went through pretty great extent to create the used table and so forth. I don't think it's been modified in many years, for, for good reasons. The BR zone, as Laurie said, is for, was to promote more large-scale, higher-end business uses and so forth. I mean, it got into a little bit retail, more retail than anything, and so forth, but, you know, I, I just look at a use like this, it, it's not going to conform to, to the current BR uses in a surround, that, that may surround it. I, I certainly don't feel it'll enhance the BR zone. And, and, and I just worry about, you know, down the road, the effects. We could put on a, a restriction that, that more so would eliminate future car washes from being built and so forth, but it, it doesn't eliminate somebody from coming in a year from now and say, well, let me make an application for another text amendment so I can circumvent that, and I can put a car wash in across the street from that. And then we start considering all of those different things. So I, I just, I'm not, not a big fan of this in a BR zone, and regardless, I just don't think that it's, it's, it's a uniform use with, with the BR, with the other BR uses and the things that surround it. I'm having a difficult time trying to support it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to piggyback off what Commissioner Petronella brought up. He did bring up a good point, but from a land use perspective, when you look at the intensity of a car wash, you have most likely high traffic, you have, you know, an auto-oriented customer base, and it's typically considered a regional customer base, depending on the car wash. And they're typically compared to other motor, motor vehicle uses, like gas stations and auto repair centers, which are currently allowed in our BR zone with special permit. So it is a similar and compatible use, just a different type of auto use. So instead of having fueling stations and auto repair, now you have the car wash touch. So, I mean, it does kind of fall into a business regional perspective. There are other towns in Connecticut that do allow car washes in what we would call their BR zone, but it's their central business district, like Newington, for example. They currently allow car washes in their BR, which is their business town center, as a special use permit. Just an example, I wanted to put some feelers out there.
Rob?
Could, could, you mind if I add something to that?
Sure.
Thank you. I, I think you're raising exactly the right point, and those are great questions, and so the question of what the zone means, that's for you all to decide. I would just point out, I know my client is interested in a, in a BR property that meets all of the, the intent and the regulations for a BR property, because it's a larger site, and it's, meets the regional shopping center model, there's a grocery store there, there's other businesses. But to Georgie's point, which is a very good one, that shopping, so I'm not arguing a particular site, but it's an example, that site also has gas pumps run by the grocery store. Why do they do that? They do it because they view it as compatible with the businesses in that shopping center. It's another convenient thing that customers can do when they go into that shopping center, they can also get gas. And I can tell you on behalf of my client, they, their model is, they view their customers and their traffic and their business model as typically being not a destination use, right? Because most of us don't say, I got to go get a car wash. Maybe you do if your car is extremely, but generally, most of the time, you'll stop by if you're passing by it, very similar with gas station, convenience store models today. The traffic analysis usually says it's a portion of the traffic that you might have for a pharmacy or something, which is a destination use, it's more, they call it pass-by. So if you picture a car wash in that kind of shopping center, where there's all these different businesses that you can visit, and there's gas pumps in auto-centric use as a convenience to the customer, you can also stop in there while you're doing all these other things and get a car wash. I mean, that may not be the way, the way you envision it, but that is the way we think it fits in with the language of the rest of the zoning regulation and of that, that intent of the BR zone, because it's, it's another convenience for people who are already driving in there.
There is also, I just remembered this, there's an advanced auto store right next door as well in the same plaza. It's kind of car-oriented as it is right now.
Right next to the restaurant at the front.
Go ahead. Rob was, because I, I want, but I do want to hear your comments. Rob?
I was going to say, everything that they both just said, but they did a way better job explaining it.
Okay. All right, then nevermind.
Every, every car wash is next to a gas station. I don't know of any that are not next to a gas station. So in a, in a zone where there's a gas station, where there's an auto parts store next door, in my mind, it makes sense to have a car wash.
John?
Well, advanced auto parts is, is auto, is retail. The gas stations are generally off highways and generally, you know, business regional is just what it is, it's regional. You go down a highway, you got to get off the highway, you got to get gas, or you travel to a regional area to do shopping. But you don't travel 10, 15, 20 miles down the road to get a car wash. That's, you know, the business regional zone. And, and that's, that's what, that's, you know, my, my position is, is that, I just don't feel like it's, it's a use that's, I, I don't, I don't see it similar to advanced auto, just because it's auto, that, that, that really does, doesn't do it, in my opinion. And again, gas station, gas stations, that's, that's, that's why they're permitted in that use, because gas stations pretty much need to be located off highways. People get off highways to get gas, and then they get back on the road and they go, again, to their destination, or they're traveling to the highway, and, and just before they get to the highway, they, they gas up. So I don't put it in that type of direct similarity, other than it's just autos, that it has, has to do with autos. So that's it.
Anyone else? Walter?
So is the Noble, is the Noble in a BL zone or BG zone?
Noble is BG.
Okay.
Noble was re-zoned.
It was re-zoned, this is an old.
It's old, BG.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What's the mall where Costco is?
I believe that's BR. Yes, that is BR.
Okay. So then, what we're saying, if we go with this, what we're saying is, that area, you could drop a car wash.
Um, no, because it's too big. The size restriction would make it ineligible for a car wash in BR. The proposal is for five to 10 contiguous acres. This one is at 19.36.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to check the other one, too, just to make.
10 to 15.
I'm sorry, 10 to 15. Thank you for correcting.
Go ahead.
What kind of backup of cars would you expect to have? Because you're talking about putting them where the restaurant is. So now you're talking about changing all of the traffic pattern there.
Well.
That would be for a site plan.
Yeah, well.
We're, I understand.
If you say you can put it there and.
So.
Our goal is if you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This might help you, Commissioner Lynch, where if you allow it via special use permit, a traffic study will be a requirement, and then you can analyze that traffic study and see the changes between existing for a restaurant use versus proposed for a car wash.
Okay, now she said what I was going to say. But that, that's exactly, that's exactly right. Our, our goal and our request to you is allow, in the regulations, us to come before you with a special permit application. Then we'll show you the site plan. We already are fairly conf, we're confident, because they've done this already, or I wouldn't be here, but they're confident that the, the queue lanes that you need for a car wash will work there, will fit there, and we will show you that on a site plan and with a traffic study. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Let John, let John go first?
I.
Well, I'll just, I just need a quick one.
All right.
All right. So to your point, Terrence, I was just thinking about Golden Nozzle. It's not a very big footprint, Golden Nozzle, you know? So it seems like, just guessing at it, I'd guess it would easily fit in the, in the restaurant space that you're talking about.
All right.
Tom? You're all set? Anybody else?
Just a last concluding thought. Of course, if you do decide to act on it tonight, and if you do decide to approve the amendment, just be sure to add that additional condition about a separation distance for 1,000 feet from the, from a similar, same use. Thank you.
Okay, I will enter, wait, is this a public hearing? Anybody in the public who would like to speak? There's no one out there, so, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did just want to just step in. I know, I won't be voting, but I, I totally understand Commissioner Petronella's point, and, and I do tend to, to agree. I don't think it's a great fit for the, the BR zone personally. Yeah, I mean, I, I understand what the applicant proposing about, you know, you know, increasing economic diversity and, which, which is valid, but at the same time, we have our zones and their uses for a reason, and we don't just allow every use just because of increased diversity of uses. So, you know, I just want to put it out there. At the very least, I, I do agree with the notion, and, and I commend you, Chairwoman, for the idea of the separation distances. At the very least, I think that's a good idea. And I, just to clarify with the language, is those separation distances not unique to the zones? So would that, would that apply to car washes across both BR and BG zones?
So this separation distance would be specific for the BR zone.
Okay.
It would be part of the conditions that would make the sites eligible or not to be able to even have a car wash in BR.
So, so I mean, with that said, I mean, the 1,000 feet then does not reach the mall, the Enfield Square Mall. And if there's no 1,000-foot separation distance in the BG zone, that means there could be.
Can I just correct one thing? If you do the 1,000-foot separation distance from Golden Nozzle, it does end midway through the mall parcel.
Right, but Golden Nozzle's in BG.
No, Noble is in BG. Right, no, you're right, never mind, I'm looking at it wrong, it's late, I'm sorry.
It is BG.
It is BG.
Yes. They're both in BG.
Looking at the wrong parcel.
Noble was grandfathered.
Right.
So that's how they got that in there.
No, no.
But.
But I, I'm not, I'm not sure that the 1,000-foot separation distance is, is going to be sufficient to long-term prevent proliferation, because I, I know the applicant only talks about two parcels today, but that's not, not necessarily infinite, there is some, you know, you can split parcels, you know, provided they still, and we know, Enfield Square Mall, they will be splitting that parcel, for example. So that's, that's just something to consider.
So, and this is to the staff, is, we make a change to Table 5.20, and we add this section 5.20.1 note, and it's just a site plan review for business regional. Is there a way, and I'm, I'm reaching here, I'm, I'm hearing what Commissioner D'Antonio said, to include the BG zone with this change? And, and I'm reaching, I'm reaching.
So if.
I'm just reaching.
If you did that, it would be feasible, but we would have to most likely table this application to make the correct change in the proposed wording, where you'd want to include that separation distance as a general separation distance, if you'd like. It would just delay.
Well, then, the question then goes to, we could do a separation when we do our regulations.
You can, and, I mean, car washes are pretty.
For the BG.
Yes, and they're pretty limited as they are right now. I know we have a lot of car washes, but they're only allowed in BG. They're not allowed in any other zone, even industrial. I mean, for example, we allow places of worship in all residential zones, all commercial districts, and all of Thompsonville districts. I mean, every use is different, but when you, when it comes down to the, the specifics of how a use is classified as business regional or business local, that is your interpretation to make.
No, I just, I, I, I'm just trying to, because I, I'm hearing, well, we're, we're covering the BR zone, but we're leaving ourselves open for the BG zone.
So you can't, right.
That's how I wanted to.
Yep. You have two paths here, from what I see from a planning perspective. You can either continue this application to make the changes tonight to include BG zones and that separation distance, or you can just proceed right now with BR, and then look at adding that separation distance in the regulation workshop.
I think we, I'm comfortable doing it in our workshop.
Because then maybe you could also explore additional separation distances for other uses.
Right, right. So I'm comfortable with that. Is that something you'd be comfortable with?
That makes sense. I mean, I, I mean, I think, you know, I think 1,000 feet does still spread to other BR areas, but.
Right, but.
Except, just let me clarify, though, but you don't have to worry about sep, under this amendment, you don't have to worry about separating to mall parcels, because they're not eligible under this amendment. So separation distance are not, you can't.
Well, they're not, they're not eligible in, in the current status, because their, their lot sizes at the current state are not 10 to 15, but there's nothing stopping them from creating 10 to 15 acre lots.
That's true, that's true.
Right, which is something, you know, we, we're looking out for.
Don't you dare.
So that's where I'm.
We're just, okay.
Which is where that separation distance for BG would come into play, because then it would cover half the mall.
And, and, yeah, and I think if, yeah. So either way, I, I think we need to strive for that, and whether it's, whether we do it here or in our workshop.
Okay. Yes, John?
There's also nothing that's preventing the mall, Costco, or any of the other parcels from coming in a year from now, and, and offering to modify the text amendment to include their acreage, because they have a, a potential car wash site. So, you know, and, and again, that's, that's the point I'm making, this is being exclusive, creating, you know, five to 15-acre parcel, but anybody could come in tomorrow and just modify that with another text amendment that increases, you said Costco's 19 acres, okay.
Costco's 19, yes.
And then here we go, we're off to the races.
Well, Costco might be disqualified, I'd have to look at the separation distance again with the new location under consideration, because I believe it would disqualify Costco. Let me just do a quick measurement.
And to be fair, to, to, to expound upon that, anybody could come to us and, a future application could, could say, well, your, your 10 to 15 acres is completely arbitrary. And, and that is true, it is completely arbitrary, because it's, it would work for this applicant.
It's right at the bar.
So, I mean, yeah, there, there's no telling what, what future applications can, can, can come telling us. I, I don't love, I don't love the, the regulation as it's written, like, very, very specifically to apply to one property, even, even separation distance aside. I, I don't think it's a super great regulation. I mean, I think these are the things we, we see down the line, and we're like, five, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, people are going to see this and be like, what? from now, 20 years from now, people are going to see this and be like, what, what was going on here? What was that one property that this was clearly written for? And this is another one of those cases. So, I mean, yeah, I think there's a few things at play between, you know, I don't love it being in the BR zone. I don't love how it's written. I mean, I'm glad it is limiting, but that's not infinitely limited. And again, the separation distances, but, yeah, you know, I, I'm kind of with Commissioner Petronell here. I think there's a few things of concern.
Anybody else?
Can I just leave you with one final thought?
Sure.
There is a business practicality behind all of this, and there is a lot of analysis that goes into whether a town has, can support X number of car washes. And certainly, we've looked at that, right? So I think, we certainly can't predict what's going to happen five or 10 years from now either. But I think as it sits today, you know, these car wash companies, the majority of them now are largely very sophisticated. There's not, I don't see a proliferation of car washes necessarily, because at some point, you're going to run out of people who will serve them, and you're going to start divvying up that customer base, and it's just not going to be practical. So I, we, I can tell you that, and I assist Russell Speeders of Connecticut, with site selection, we are very sensitive to competition. And I imagine our competitors, who operate essentially the same business model, look at it that way, too. So when we looked at Enfield, and we knew we wanted to be in Enfield, one of the things we took, get more subscription base, you know, we're primarily a subscription membership model now, that's what the car wash are going to do. We took a look at the demographics of the town, we took a look at the population, and we made sure that there was not, there was inadequate, that the town wasn't already served or over-served by the existing car washes in town. So just wanted to leave you with that thought.
Okay, thank you. All set? I will entertain a motion to close public hearing 3121.
Show move, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. This is just to close the public hearing.
Yep. Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Kenneth Hulinski.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronell is four.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion for PH 3121.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve public hearing number 3121, text amendment application for table 5.20 and section 5.20.1 to add language of use of a car wash to the BR zone with conditions. Russell Speeders Car Wash of Connecticut LLC applicant, Joseph P. Williams, representative of BR zones, and with the findings that in adopting this regulation, the commission finds that the proposal is consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. And, am I reading in the effective date?
Yes, and then don't forget the additional condition of the separation distance.
Yes, the effective date published in the newspaper on April 26. The amendment shall be effective on May 12, 2025. And an added condition would be that there will be a separation of 1,000 feet for businesses of similar car wash use.
In the BR zone.
Well, that's what this is, just for the BR zone. So it's.
Yeah, you don't have to restate BR, it is BR.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Against.
Kenneth Hulinski.
Four.
Vincent Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronell is against.
That's five, four, four and two against, and the reasons, you need to state your reasons, voting no.
Not for a text amendment.
Yes, you do.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I would state reasons why, please.
Yeah.
It doesn't fit.
For text amendment?
Text amendment, you don't need it.
You don't state your reasons, and for some reason.
Not in conformance with the regulations in table 5.20, and the use is not in conformance with other BR uses and surrounding uses.
Right.
The same.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, welcome, thank you. You're all set.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want a little tidbit. If you don't state your reasons why you're denying an application for a zone change or a text amendment, and if for some reason it were to be appealed, then the court would look at the record and make their own reasons as to why you denied it. So that's why we always state reasons.
Okay. All right, moving on. New business, under new business, 8-24 CIP presentation is postponed. Do we have a date to when?
May 8.
May 8, okay. All right. Commissioners' correspondence. Anyone? Go ahead.
I'm going to ask a question of staff. I'll do my monthly question, especially as the mall looms closer. Do we have any updates from the town side with regards to the Park and Ride relocation situation?
Yeah, it's not looking good.
We're having a hard time finding a spot. We did reach out to Ocean State, and we're still working on a few others. Aaron's been working really hard on it.
Yeah. We've been reaching out to any place that might have room.
From the town side, town property?
Sorry?
The problem is.
Town property?
The problem is DOT wants to be within a specific proximity to the highway, and that if we're not within their distance requirement, then they don't want to have the law, essentially. So we're kind of tied down to eligible locations, and that's what we've been trying to find agreement with, some of the existing plazas.
And this is less than half a mile from the highway.
Yeah, that's kind of what they prefer, and it's hard, again, it's hard to find, because they want an easy on, easy off. And, I mean, we have some works in the background going. Aaron's been working pretty hard on getting some contracts in, but it's just hard to get takers, so, but we're still pushing at it.
Thanks.
Walter?
The UL building at exit 46, anyone reach out to them?
I believe it was on my list when I emailed Aaron, because we went down the whole highway, and I sent Aaron a whole list of properties that we could reach out to.
That's where it was, years and years ago.
Yeah. And that's a big empty lot right now, so.
Well, the trouble is if, you know, I mean, they're private owners, you know, they do, they do have their, you know, they do have a right to review, so.
I'm pulling for you. I see all the cars that are over there that park and ride the bus, so.
It is very popular, and we do want to keep it. So we are working diligently to try to maintain that.
It's a public asset, and we can't necessarily rely on the goodwill of private property owners to provide that. That's why, that's why it's public. I appreciate staff.
We're doing the best we can. Just stay tuned.
Yeah, no, it's not easy, no doubt. So thanks.
We'll let you know if we hear anything. It's, I mean, we've been working on it for a while now, and really no takers.
Anyone else under Commissioners' correspondence? No? All right, Director of Planning report.
Pardon? I've got two minutes, okay. So not much to talk about. I will say that there was a sale of 35 Bacon Road. The, it was sold to Amazon. This happened yesterday, and as far as we know, things are going to progress as they were approved. So that's all I can tell you, but I didn't want you to hear that from.
Wow.
Public.
35 Bacon Road being the old Hallmark's?
Yeah.
The one behind, for when Stanley.
Yeah.
So when Stanley sold it.
Wow. Okay. Can't say the business is not coming to Enfield, so. There's no authorization for administrative approvals, applications to be received.
Madam Chair, I just want to clarify for the record. PH 3124, 100 High Street, application for a change of use from church or theater, opera house players, African owner, map 25, lot 131, TD5 zone. It is actually a site plan review application. Theaters are allowed in TD5 via site plan review, and we had a misunderstanding with Commercial Rec, but it's theater, it's for the opera house people, so it's actually SPR 1954.
Okay.
Okay. And PH 3122, 900 Enfield Street, application per section 10.30.2. B.2 and section 10.30.7. J. for an internally illuminated sign. Jeremy Weycott, applicant, Fleet National Bank of Connecticut, owner, map 26, lot 13, TD5 zone. Letter B, PH 3123, 15 Solero Drive, application for a special use permit to allow an accessory apartment. Samantha and David Parker, applicant, owner, map 103, lot 80, R44 zone.
Okay. No opportunities to unresolved issues, no executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so we are adjourned.
10:00 PM.
Thank you.